Twenty twenty three to order. Welcome, everyone, and I'd like the clerk to call roles.
Trustee Acosta. Trustee Alta. Trustee Estrada.
Here.
Trustee Nichols.
Here.
Trustee Roth.
Here.
Trustee Sanchez.
Here.
Trustee Alvarez.
Here.
President Van Allen.
Here. Thank you. Do we have any board members needing to connect to us firstly today? And we're now to item number two, the pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to ask.
Please rise if you can, face the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, trustees. It's now time for approval of the agenda, and I want to ask for a particular thing. Unfortunately, we didn't actually receive all the necessary materials for the closed litigation session. So we'd like to table that until the December meeting, and I need a motion to table.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion by Roth, second by Estrada to table. Close session at five point one and approved today's agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most of you care as unanimously all present. Thank you. Skipping the closed session, we are now in open session, discussing the court on these open sessions, and now is the opportunity for public comment. This is a time for anyone from the public wishes to address the board on items that are not on today's agenda, and we ask that you leave your remarks to three minutes. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? We have an online request for a comment.
There was an online request, however, they're not in the form. Or they're not on Zoom yet.
And it was for something not on the agenda.
Correct.
Well, we'll carry on. We're now to the consent agenda, and trustees, I need any corrections from you or exceptions or motion.
Something in the minutes about Lawrence Lane, where it said Lawrence and then Lawrence again. So I'll tell you what, Paige, I have to look it up just.
Okay, how are you?
James, find me a cup.
Having trouble finding it. Can I tell her later?
Yes.
I think it's on page eleven. That's my memory.
Just describe briefly what it referred to and then.
It referred to our appointment of Larry Lane to the, was it the personnel commission?
So it was a typo in that item.
Yeah.
And I think I'll motion to approve the consent agenda with asking the staff to correct that typo in that.
Thank you.
Motion by Nichols, second.
I'll say.
Second by Sanchez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most of you care unanimously. Now to correspondence. Is there any correspondence in addition to those in the?
No correspondence. President Van Allen.
Thank you. Trustees, we are now at section eleven, reports, discussions, and presentations. The first presentation will be eleven point one, Williams Legislation Report on our Valley Unified School District and Santa Cruz City School District, and Dr. Sabat, you want to introduce?
I do. I'd like to welcome Brian Wall and Richard Reed, who are going to be providing a presentation about Williams legislation. As you know, this is part of our responsibility as the county house of education to ensure that the basics, the basic resources are available to our students, and this, this process has existed for quite some time. We're fortunate to have the expertise of former deputy superintendent Brian Wall, as well as our director of maintenance and operations, and to who are the ones responsible for visiting schools, ensuring that, that those resources are available to, to all students. We provided a report to us this afternoon in regard to how our schools have done this year. So I'd like to welcome Ryan Wall and Richard Reed.
Good afternoon. Nice to see all of you. You know, basically, this is why.
Is the microphone on?
I don't know if I did.
It's, it's, we need it for the.
Is it working now?
Thank you.
All right. Now you're really going to hear me. Okay. This is our yearly report that we do regarding, you know, the Williams legislation from, from years ago. This year, we, the districts that we visited were PVUSD, Delta Charter, Santa Cruz City Schools, San Lorenzo Unified, Pacific District, and the SCCOE program, the C, you know, the CAC, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, the things that we're looking for. And Richard's going to talk a little bit more about the facilities after I talk about the curriculum aspect of things. But what we're looking for really when we go is to make sure there's sufficient instructional materials at each of the sites for kids in the classroom and also to take home if, if necessary. The other thing that we're looking for in the core academic areas, by the way, and then the other thing we're looking for is, you know, in the facility side of it, really anything that's hazardous or could cause serious injury to students. And we, we've determined that there were a few things, but, but for the most part, our visits have been fruitful in, in the sense that everything we've recommended has very much been addressed by the districts and the schools. So we're really pleased to see that, that, you know, something that people don't look forward to ends up being something positive in the end. The other thing that we do is we make sure that the, the SARC, you know, the school accounting, the school accountability report card is accurate, and it reflects the things that it's supposed to reflect, you know, each year, and we found that in each case that it was accurate. The other thing that we want to make sure is that everybody has their uniform complaint policy posted and that it's, it's in a conspicuous place for, really for parents to be able to see. And it's supposed to be posted in English and Spanish, which, which we found was the case in all the schools. And then also we're looking for teacher misassignments, credentialing issues and things like that. One of the schools just actually had a marked the wrong column and ended up being visited a couple of years in row. Really only by happenstance. They're, all of their teachers are actually properly credentialed. Their principal just checked their log box and reported to the state. So we visit them because we have to, but they're, they're doing a fantastic job. We'll talk about that a little bit. So basically, if you turn to the second page of the document, you'll, you'll actually see the schools that we visited. There were eleven schools total. So we visited Bayview Elementary, Calabasas Elementary, Delta Charter, EA Hall, McQuitty Elementary, Pacific Elementary, PV High School, Rolling Hills Middle School, San Lorenzo Valley Middle School, and then our own CAC. And, you know, just to point out that the only reason we even visit the CAC is because their graduation rate, they're never going to be able to reach a certain graduation rate because of the clientele that they attract and that they're educating. So it's a perpetual thing for them, but they're doing a fantastic job. So just because they're on the list doesn't mean that they're, you know, they're not excelling at what they do because, you know, they're bringing in people that, you know, older adults that, you know, that missed out on a high school diploma. So it's pretty hard to, you know, reach a graduation rate for folks when, when, you know, it's kind of, you know, after the fact. So I just wanted you to kind of realize that that's, that's the case with the CAC. So in each case, in all the schools, everybody ranked fine with instructional materials for every student. Everybody had a uniform complaint policy posted in English and Spanish. On the day of the visit, everybody was properly credentialed, which is something very unique this year. In the past, there had been huge gaps, especially for PVUSD. They had a hard time attracting teachers for a while, and then making sure that they were property, properly credentialed in their subject areas. And this year, there was only one substitute in the entire district that we visited. That was a long term sub and was going to be hired as a permanent employee within the week that we visited. So that's a big, big change for them. They should be applauded for, for their efforts in attracting properly credentialed people. So I'm going to turn it over to Richard just to talk a little bit about some of the facility issues that we may have seen. And we go from there and then see if you have any questions.
Good afternoon, everybody. We enjoy doing these Williams visits. It's very collaborative. It's nice to get out into the community and see schools and kids. We visit the same schools year after year, so it kind of becomes like old home for us. And it's nice to see some of the problems being corrected and schools improving because of the visits. We only had one school that scored fair, which means that there was something that we noticed that we felt like there was a safety issue. All of our other schools either scored excellent or good. And, and really Brian did a great job of talking about what we do. We visited eleven schools this year. From a facility standpoint, we're looking for things that are really related to school safety. Leaking roofs, mildew issues, carpet damage, stuff that's going to trip or trip and fall. And that was actually the thing that caused the one school to score fair is they had some holes in the playground that a student might hurt themselves if they were to step into, and we were really concerned about that. So that's the one thing that we did bring up. Do you have any questions for us?
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you both. Do you have any further?
No, I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, we are now to item eleven point two. This is the annual report from Collegiate School. And I'd like to introduce Dr. Raitano.
If it'd be all right for me to provide a quick introduction. As you know, Pacific Collegiate School is authorized by this, by this board, as, and so you are the charter authorizers. And so over the years, you've developed a really wonderful partnership with Pacific Collegiate, and that is defined in an MOU and of course in their charter. And part of that relationship is that, is ongoing meetings with the charter committee that, that we have, as well as an annual report where we discuss a variety of topics and really take a look at, at the strengths and some of the challenges that are faced. And I would like to just share appreciation for the presence of Esaian Arvalal, the, the chair of the board for, for the charter who's here and other folks who are, who are here present to support of, of Pacific Collegiate School. So also want to welcome Dr. Raitano and as well as Aleah Hatcher, who's, who's the director of, of school equity, I believe.
Well, yeah.
Almost, almost. You'll help, you'll help correct me on that one. But appreciate your presence and please take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Sabah, President Van Allen, board trustees and attendees both here and online. As Dr. Sabah mentioned, I'm Maria Raitano, head of school at PCS. I'm pleased to be joined by our director of diversity, equity, and inclusion, is Aleah Hatcher. And as we begin, I want to just pause to recognize and appreciate the leadership and support of our board of directors, the tireless efforts of our faculty and staff who work every day to live into our commitment to preparing every student for college and career opportunities. And that's really what we're here to talk with you about this afternoon. It's our pleasure to share with you some statistics and information regarding our school, as well as an update on progress towards the goals outlined in our 2020 to 2025 diversity plan. And although we've been sharing, as Dr. Sabah mentioned, updates of our work quarterly with the charter subcommittee, we're happy to share with the full board today, the ongoing work we're, we're doing to make sure that PCS's exceptional college preparatory education is accessible to students throughout Santa Cruz County. I'm going to highlight some school-wide data and background information for you, and then Aleah will provide a more specific update on progress towards each of our five diversity plan goals. And as usual, we'll wrap up with an opportunity for you to ask any questions you may have. I don't know who's driving, but Veronese, thank you. You may recall from past presentations that PCS adopted a new strategic plan in 2021. And in support of that work, we engaged hundreds of our educational partners in an iterative process to revise and refine the vision, mission, and value statements for our school. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and access are intentionally forefronted in these statements as essential principles that continue to guide our community. On the next slide, our mission statement, you will notice that these collaboratively, collaboratively developed statements build on our tradition of academic excellence and stress the importance of what I like to call our true north, which is ensuring that we remove barriers so that all students have equitable access and the opportunity to benefit from our exemplary program. On the next slide, you'll see our core values, and these serve as a framework for engaging as a school community. We're committed to holding ourselves accountable for actions that foster an inclusive school community in which students and families experience connection and belonging. They're a strong foundation for a positive school climate and culture and the initiatives that we have underway, including multi-tiered systems of support, which Aleah will be speaking with you about, and our work towards a positive behavior intervention and support or PDIS system for PCS. They also feature prominently in our recently revised student recognition system, which was developed by our DEI task force. On the next slide, you'll see the anchors of our strategic plan, which is included in the report we submitted to you as appendix A. And it anchors the work of our school in the five key areas shown here. You'll notice that these are the same areas that are reflected in our diversity plan and in our LCAP. So we're striving to have alignment around those core values and ideals that we're holding ourselves accountable for. This year, PCS is also deeply engaged in a self-study to support our upcoming accreditation visit by a team from the Western Association of Schools and Colleges. And anyone who's ever been involved in a WASP process knows, this is an incredibly labor and time intensive process that engages the whole school community in reflecting on our program, our facility, our staff, our instruction, our student life, learning outcomes, progress towards goals, and much, much more. And while that process is really helpful to us in taking the temperature and taking a moment to assess our progress towards goals, it also takes a considerable amount of time and effort away from other initiatives that we've been driving towards in recent years. And so I just think as we begin our presentation, I want to frame the conversation that we're going to have by noting that diversity efforts at any school, ours is no exception, take place in the midst of challenging times for California schools who must increasingly do more with fewer funds, find ways to help students rebound from learning loss, meet the needs of unprecedented mental health challenges, and for us, an accreditation self-study. I share this to help you understand that the critical work required to meet our goals is not a short-term effort. Rather, it's a fundamental priority for our school despite the busyness of any given year. Focusing on equity, unpacking institutional racism, and creating conditions that welcome and support each student and family is unique and nuanced and complex work. We recognize that it will be our persistence and tireless commitment to this work over the course of years that will result in the desired changes and demographic shifts, and we appreciate your partnership in those efforts. So just a little bit of bragging about our school, if you wouldn't mind, Veronese, the next slide. I'm proud to report that PCS continues to be recognized as a leading institution in secondary education. We're recognized in 2021 as a California distinguished school. We've received high ratings for years through the U.S. News and World Report, NISH, the Challenge Index Ratings, and so on and so forth, both at the local, national, and state levels, and we're proud that that tradition of excellence continues. We attribute, next slide, please. We attribute the, our success to small class sizes, rigorous learning across an expansive curriculum, and an exemplary team of educators. We've expanded our commitment to diversity in recent years, as those of you who are continuing members of the board know, by expanding our lottery preferences to welcome a more diverse student population and by taking other actions, we'll be detailing in the remainder of this presentation. We're proud of our progress, but there is more work yet to be done. Just to give you a taste of recent success and our current standings, on the next slide, you'll see 2023 results for English Language Arts. And these figures are differentiated or disaggregated rather for our largest subpopulations, Latinx and white students, and by grade level. So you can see that PCS students continue to perform well, and the majority of our students in all subgroups are meeting or exceeding state standards in English Language Arts. In some cases, like eleventh grade, our Latinx population is outperforming their white peers, which we're pleased to see. So, so those results, and if you turn to the next, move to the next slide, please. This is the visuals, one of the visualizations available through the COE's data portal. And as you can see here, we, we saw the same kind of learning loss and downturn in performance over the course of the pandemic and immediately following as other schools across the state and nation. But we're really proud of the rebounding that we're seeing in both English Language Arts and Math since that time, which is telling us that our, some of our efforts to regain some of that learning loss are, are being effective. On the next slide, you'll see similar results for mathematics. We are continuing to see gaps in the performance of our students in mathematics that predate the pandemic. So you'll notice that at each grade level, there are distinct gaps between the performance of our Latinx students and our white, and their white peers. Those gaps were exacerbated during the pandemic as those conditions disproportionately affected many of those communities. But if you look at the next slide, you'll see that in math as well. When we look at that equity dashboard, you can see that rebound happening for all of our populations. Our work over the next few years is to make sure that those gaps are, are lessened. And so we're doing that in a few different ways. Next slide, please. So we're continuing to address our accessibility and, and performance gaps, particularly for economically disadvantaged Latinx and English learners, which we see specifically in mathematics or most dramatically in mathematics in a variety of different ways. We noticed that middle school math in particular, as a starting point for the grades that we serve, seven through twelve at PCS, is a foundational time that we're noticing those initial gaps. And so we want to work intentionally in those middle years, or middle grades rather, to address those gaps, so that as students move up through the math sequence at PCS, they're better prepared to perform on par with their peers. So how are we doing that? This year, we had a math teacher on special assignment with release time to explore and innovate what differentiated instruction looks like in middle school mathematics to address the gaps that are identified for each individual student and trends over the course of the middle grades as a whole. That particular teacher is not only working on differentiating math instruction in the classroom, but taking note of where we have persistent gaps that we can redesign curriculum to address so that all students are moving through those grades, ready for high school mathematics, as strong of mathematicians as they can possibly be. We have math tutoring support and additional learning opportunities available for all students at the tier one level in tutorial and after school, four days a week. We have adopted software technology that's responsive learning software that provides personalized practice in each student's areas of growth. That's a program called IXL, and it not only identifies areas where students may have a skill or understanding gap, but gives them additional practice in that area so that the teacher has support and a responsive tool to help each student be working on the particular skills that they need to to shore up and be ready for the next math concept. We're also in process and nearing the very end of process and putting together a proposal for a revised middle school math program at PCS with multiple entry points and levels of support. Previously, all students who came to PCS started with pre-algebra. We're noting particularly since the pandemic that there are a number of students who aren't ready for that level of mathematics yet. And so we're working on a system that would allow multiple entry points so that by the time all students get to high school, they've had the kind of learning that they need to be successful and, and move into algebra and beyond. If you look at the next slide, you can see that our students perform consistently well on scholastic aptitude tests and other high stakes college admissions tests above and beyond the national averages. This is true year after year at PCS. And while many colleges and universities have recently adopted test optional admissions criteria, we want to eliminate the barrier for all PCS students. And so we provide PSAT, SAT, and ACT test preparation courses and materials for all students with no cost to families. And anyone who's had a pre-college teenager recently knows that that can be a cost savings of between a thousand and $2,000. But we offer it to all of our students at no cost. On the next slide, you can see our success in advanced placement courses. PCS's curriculum is aimed at ensuring that students have multiple opportunities to take and pass advanced placement courses before they leave PCS. The requirement is five AP classes. Most students, our average is about seven. And we see this as an opportunity for families to save college tuition money and for students to demonstrate their capability with college-level work long before they matriculate into college. The majority of students who participated in AP exams last year, about seventy-eight percent of them, earned passing scores of three, four, or five, and so were able to apply for college credit. On the next slide, you'll see that this year, we in response to our scores from last year, received two different awards from the college board. One reflects that our curriculum offers opportunities for all students without tracking prerequisites or any kind of entrance exam for AP classes. And the other reflects the fact that students of color at PCS perform at levels similar to their white peers on AP exams, demonstrating the success in our efforts to reduce those gaps and ensure equitable outcomes for all students. So what happens when kids leave PCS? On the next slide, you can see that the class of 2023 headed in a lot of different directions. We had about thirteen percent of our students went to community college, seventy-five percent matriculated directly to a four-year university program, one percent enlisted in military service by matriculating to a military college, and eleven percent decided to take a gap year. I'm hearing a lot about travels and study abroad before starting college. In short, I'll say that we continue our commitment to high achievement, but also to closing gaps and providing a college preparatory education that opens doors for every student that wants to be a part of the PCS community. And with that, I'm pleased to invite, turn things over to our DEI director, Aleah Hatcher, to provide a more detailed update on how this work is going at PCS.
Thanks for having me. I want to start by kind of reiterating what Maria said in the beginning of the presentation and just sharing a personal reflection around what progress and timelines look like in equity and anti-racism work. When I began this work, I thought that it would be a lot quicker than what it actually is. And that's just not the reality of authentic anti-racism work. It takes time, which means that we're moving at a pace that frankly is slower than anyone would be comfortable with, right? And I think that's true across all schools at this point in time. This year, we've definitely experienced some very real challenges that have impeded some of the process. And it's not, it's not the end of the road for us. We're continuing to move forward. And it's not, it's not the end of the road for us. We're continuing to move forward. But it is important to acknowledge the fact that budget cuts have. Definitely hindered our ability to support BIPOC students, to support students with disabilities, to support students that are first to college, so on and so forth. And WASC also takes up a significant amount of time, so the ability that we have to train our teachers to move forward. On the work that we've done over the past couple of years is definitely slower. This year than in previous years, so we're very excited to be moving towards the end of WASC. Because then we will be able to get back into. Into the meat of what we need to do. So in the next slides, I'm going to talk about the five different goals that we have. And I'll start off with the DEI task force. So this is a group of approximately fifteen different community members. It's made up of students, it's made up of parents. Staff members, faculty members, board members, administrators, and community members. And we come together to check in on how is PCS doing towards its equity and inclusion goals. Evaluate our strengths and our areas for growth. This year, these are our main priorities. We are continuing to complete our Equity by Design framework. Through finishing our equity audit, which I'll talk a little bit about in a second. We are also, last year completed a proposed expanded student recognition system. So this year, we're in the process of monitoring and providing feedback on the rollout of that and making sure. That it is coming into fruition. We are also in the process of revising our community surveys and making sure that the questions that we're asking. Actually allow for us to hear from the voices that we haven't heard from in the past. And also reducing the number of those that we don't see a. So that we don't see fatigue from the people that are taking the survey. We want as accurate data as we can get. And then the last thing that we are working on doing as a task force this year. Is making a plan to address past harms pertaining to identity that we either exacerbated by our action or inaction. Or that we ourselves were the cause of. That feels like a really important part of restoring trust within our community. And making sure that people know that this is a priority for us and that we want their kids in the building. Can you move forward, please? Thanks. So for the expanded student recognition system. We use student voice. We got approximately half of our student population to respond and share what they were wanting to see. In terms of how they would be recognized and what they would be recognized for. So they wanted to be recognized for positive habits of mind, things like resilience, growth mindset. They wanted to be recognized for demonstrating the school values, which Maria showed earlier. They also wanted to be recognized for extracurricular activities. We have. Had a new sports director over the past year, who's done a really great job of expanding that. And our art department has also been expanding quite a bit, and so they've, our students are really wanting to be recognized for those things that they're doing as well. And then we also. Want to expand the opportunities for people to be recognized for academics. Right now, what we have is a. Salutatorian system. And what we want to add into that is a cum laude system and an honor roll system, which allows for more students to be able to be recognized for that. So the really cool things that come out of the student recognition system. Is that students themselves get an opportunity to nominate their peers for demonstrating the school values. Which we feel is a really important part of empowering students to actually live into what our mission, vision, and values are as a school. We also know that by expanding these opportunities. It allows for students to start to build their college resumes earlier. And show really the full wealth and depth of what they are doing as students and young people in this community. Next slide, please. So the other thing that we are working on is our equity audit. The DEI task force has identified these different focus areas. If you can click really quickly. There'll be a little animation that pops up. Thank you. So for, we're looking at whole and culturally proficient staff and faculty. Whole stands for wellness, healing, opportunity, learning, and equity. We're focused on inclusive school cultures and policies, culturally relevant curriculum, student-centered academics. And learning leadership, also whole resources for our students and families and making sure that we are engaged fully. In the Santa Cruz community. We're currently reviewing our school culture and policies by looking at student caregiver and staff experience surveys from the previous years that we've done them. Checking to see what's going really well and where are continued areas for growth. And then we're also expanding our anti-discrimination and anti-racism policies so that they are significantly more clear as to what that means, what that looks like. And how, what families and students can expect in terms of a response when things come up. Next slide, please. So these are the five holes that we have for our diversity plan. We, I'll start with. Goal A, if we can go to the next one. Okay, so. Much of this you all have heard about before. We've updated our lottery preference to make sure that thirty percent of our spots for seventh graders. Are open to traditionally underrepresented students. That includes students that are first to college. And students that receive free and reduced lunch programs. We also are working on making sure that our communication is inclusive. So that means that making sure that all of our. Anything that goes out from the school is translatable. Anything, and that there's also multiple modalities that we're sending it out, not just through phone, not just through email, using text. Sending actual flyers home in the mail and really trying to make sure that we're having that one-on-one connection with our families. Then also our bilingual community liaison has been a really huge help. She's brought in, she has brought in a lot of different connections that she had when. Before she was working with PCS and that helped us to connect with a number of the different. Organizations that are pictured up there, including Mahalo Project. Nueva Viz, the Davenport Resource Center, just to name a few. And those partnerships look like us going over to those resource centers and either volunteering. It also looks like us going and holding information sessions there. So that families throughout the county can know about PCS as an option for them and what it has to offer. We also make sure that we hold our lottery sessions bilaterally and that when we. Have our lottery information sessions that we have technology there and people there to support people with completing. The actual application because that can sometimes be a barrier as well. We also do accept our applications in paper and myself and the bilingual community liaison manually will enter those into the lottery system. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide is showing what our current enrollment for race is as it stands right now. As you can see, tenth grade is our most racially diverse group. With about fifty percent of the student body being BIPOC students. The second most diverse would be our seventh grade. The reason why I point these two out is these are kind of the two touchpoints for our school. Tenth grade is oftentimes, that's when students start their AP classes. And so that's when the rigor gets much more increased and we tend to see attrition at that grade. So we've been working really hard and diligently to make sure that we are bolstering those kids up and making sure that they have the supports that they need. Seventh graders also making sure that they are like well wrapped in and connected. One of the things that we've also seen in exit survey data is that students really want to feel connection with their peers and really want to feel connection with staff and faculty. So through things like homeroom and game days and things like that. We're looking to make sure that students feel really connected. To the school because that's part of what keeps them there. Next slide, please. Alright, so this is our racial enrollment data over since twenty seventeen. I think this is a really great example of what slow equity work looks like. It's slow, but it is steady, which I'm quite proud of. The one thing that I did want to point out. Is that since twenty seventeen, approximately. When we looked at county and state levels of enrollment, approximately three percent. There's been approximately a three percent change since twenty seventeen in their demographics, which means that three percent increase in students of color. And a three percent decrease in white students. During that same time period for PCS. We saw the demographics shift by six point four percent. That is over six percent increase in students of color with a corresponding decrease in white students. So this data demonstrates that PCS is making positive gains and efforts to diversify our student population. And since we know that this work does take time, we're continuing to analyze and use this data, the data that is on your portal. To identify what are those specific strategies that are allowing for us to see this accelerated growth so that we can continue it. Next slide, please. Alright, now these, this is our multi-tiered systems of support. We know. That it is every student's right to be supported and have the resources and. And access that they need to be successful at any school. At PCS, this looks like a multi-tiered system. It's kind of hard to see from there, but we are constantly adding in new supports to each of these tiers. So this is what we currently have and are continuously building that out. Next slide, please. Alright, so there is a lot that has been done here in terms of building our mechanisms for student support. But some of what that has looked like is refining the work of our student support and advisory team, our SSAT team. It currently includes our vice principal, myself, the dean of faculty, a college counselor, bilingual community liaison. Our socially emotional counselor, our director of special education, a five oh four coordinator, and now. A Encompass representative, which is a contractor that we work with to support students with mental health. They also joined that meeting as well. We're also looking to expand SSAT to. Look at whole school data and identify trends that are happening there so that we can intervene on a larger level. Currently, what we do is significantly more individualized support to students. Also, our bilingual community liaison works and supports on multilingual students and their families. Sophia did a really incredible job of connecting with those families, making them feel heard and seen. And she's put us in a really great place to continue that work. We have also expanded our services for English language learners and our students that have been reclassified as English proficient. And this includes having professional tutoring for them. There is also a tutorial period that they have. Two times a week where they come in and meet with our English language. Development coordinator and she. She helps them to identify where are they struggling, what teachers do they need to work with. If there's specific skills that they need to build, she helps them with that. And she also works with our general education teachers to make sure that they're integrating ELD strategies. Because we know that those strategies are good for all students, not just English language learners. Other things. We. As I mentioned before, we also contracted with Encompass and they are now able to provide us support for our students of a larger amount. Which is really good as we've seen an uptick in the need of mental health needs for our students. We're continuing to work with our avid regional team. And also work with our teachers to make sure that they are embedding the practices into the general education classrooms because we don't yet have. A critical mass of students that would fall into the avid program. Next slide, please. Okay, so as mentioned before, we're in WASC and that means that it has eaten up. Pretty much all of our time so far as it pertains to professional development. As we move into our second semester, though, we'll be getting back on track with that and we'll be having teachers choose one of the four strands. They will then be working with myself or other school leaders. On specific things. So for instance, DEI will be looking at restorative justice practices. Universal Design for Learning is looking at actually implementing those practices and planning with UDL in mind. Integrated ELD is looking at constructive meeting strategies. We had a cohort of teachers that went to that training last year, and so those teachers are continuing to expand. And build capacity across the school. And then our socially emotional learning that is supporting teachers with understanding how to. De-escalate students when they are in crisis, to notice what crisis looks like. And also what it means for them to support themselves and keep themselves healthy so that they're able to show up for their kids. Next slide, please. Okay, in terms of our recruiting of diverse school leadership and staff. Right now, we're just continuing to build on our partnerships. With local four-year colleges and institutions that have education programs that we can try to build pipelines with them. That is a process that takes time as well. We also, I work with the HR department and make sure that we update our recruiting and our hiring policies. Make sure that all of our questions. Are actually getting us at what we're looking for and root out bias that we don't necessarily have the time to train out. And then we also work. In long-term planning so that we're making sure that we address the very real financial issues that come up as a result of living in Santa Cruz County. It gets significantly more expensive. That continues to be a barrier to attracting diverse teaching staff. Next slide, please. Okay, so for inclusive and supportive school cultures, there are so many things that happen here. But we can't put them all on one slide, so I'm just gonna highlight some of them for you. We continue to work on an equity-focused review of our curriculum and our instruction in all subjects. And that looks like both individual work. With the, how do you call them, the people that are watching the goals. I guess like. Professional goals for people, essentially.
Evaluators.
Evaluators, thank you. And then in addition to that, it's also looking at department goals. Each department is looking at revising their curriculum as well and making sure that it has diverse viewpoints in it. That there are. Strategies in there that allow access points for multilingual students. And first to college students. We're also working with diverse student leaders to design culturally. Cultural celebrations that are not tokenizing. So some of what that looks like is our Fall Febru celebrations. Doing celebrations for Black History Month, and I'll share some pictures with you all in a bit. Additionally, we conduct our annual student experience surveys. And a variety of other different listening sessions to make sure that we're constantly getting student voice. And making sure that what we're doing is meeting their needs. Then we are also supporting students and staff in the creation of affinity spaces. And this, the intent behind this is one to build community within the smaller enclaves. With a special eye towards our BIPOC, multilingual, socio-economically diverse, and LGBTQI populations of students. Those are the ones where we see attrition for students and staff. So just wanting to make sure that they feel held and supported. And then we also, as mentioned before, have expanded therapeutic services so that we are able to support a larger group of kids. Next slide, please. So these are some examples of what. Our programming looks like. So a couple of weeks back. Our Latina and Hispanic Heritage Student Union worked together to put up this. our Latina and Hispanic Heritage Student Union worked together to put up this beautiful ofrenda. They opened it up to the entire school and so there were students that were were from all different backgrounds that were submitting pictures of their ancestors, which was really beautiful. We also just put up a, uh, display for Native American Heritage Month. We try to make sure that those displays are really interactive. So we want kids to come and take things off of the board. We want kids to come instead of the listening station and hear the origin stories. We want kids to come and look at the books. We also have, as I mentioned before, Fall FABU, which is a really, it's just grown every single year. But it is an opportunity for us to hear from a local community member that identifies as queer. This year, we got to hear from Adam Spinkler, is that his name? Which was really incredible. He came and he spoke to us about what intersectionality looks like. And it also looks like celebrating the diversity that we have on staff already. And so like for Women's History Month, we asked for, uh, we sent out a survey and asked people, or asked women on a different campus, on our campus, different questions like, who are your role models? What advice do you have? How do you celebrate Women's History Month? So just making sure that those faces and voices are lifted on our school campus. And then also bringing in community members. These three lovely humans, Murray Baumgarten, Edith Colstein, and Peter Kinnaz, were gracious enough to come to our school last year in January for Holocaust Remembrance Day and share a bit about their experience. So these are just some examples of what it looks like at our school in real time. Next slide, please. And then our final goal is around refining data collection and assessment. And so this looks like our data tose, which has release time. And that allows for him to engage in data analysis and analysis and to support myself and Maria and all other departments with doing deeper dives into their data and seeing what can be gained from that. It looks like us revising our student family and staff input surveys, which is currently happening in our DEI task force. It also looks like the development of common and local assessments, which is something that our departments are working really hard on. And then using tools like iXL and iReady as a way to identify where students are at and what their needs are in real time. Next slide, I think that's our last one. Yes, it is. So questions?
Thank you. Um, so trustees, this is an opportunity for us to ask questions or make comments on the presentation. And our protocol here is that we ask our student trustee first if you have any comments or questions. Trustee Alvarez, uh.
I think I wanted to say is how the inclusion of Latinx or Latinos in and being able to bring them up, because a lot come from migrants. So being able to bring them up is, I think, very important to me as a Latino myself, which is very, I'm very happy to hear.
Thank you. Trustees, comments, questions? Trustee Sanchez.
So I just wanna recognize kind of some of the improvements that are being done. I think that, well, I don't think, I know that twenty twenty was a challenging year. And the afterthought, you know, we're still struggling, we're still trying to get back to those pre-levels. But I was really impressed to see that during the, the report that we received, everything from, you know, suspension data to enrollment to school attendance has improved this year prior, when compared to the prior year. It might not be at the, you know, pre-pandemic levels, but at least we're, we're getting there. So that's, that's, that's good, right, to see where, that at least we're changing that trend, right, and going the direction that we do want to go. Then I also, well, on that subject, you know, I just wanted to focus on school attendance. So that one is down, but it's, again, has improved from next year. But even then, I think PCS has always done a really good job when it comes to school attendance. This year, based on the information that we received, ninety-six point five percent, which is impressive. I don't, I don't think I saw any information or reference to chronic absenteeism. But I don't think that is, doesn't sound like it's an issue for PCS.
I mean, there are students who are chronically absent. It's not a huge issue. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I mean, like any school, there are students who are chronically absent and we work really hard to reengage those students and to work with those families to ensure that students are re-engaging with school and supported in the ways that they need to in order to be successful. But it's not as chronic, a chronic problem as it, as it exists elsewhere. And, um, you know, our best year for student attendance was during the pandemic, during online learning, because kids could just roll over and click on the computer. Now that they have to get out of bed and drive all the way to school, you know, we, we did see a drop, but we were still over ninety-five percent attendance. So we're pleased that our kids are, for the most part, are, are there and with us and learning every day.
Nice, yeah, glad to hear that. That's definitely a challenge that we're seeing in other schools, not only here in the county, but statewide as well. So any information, you know, any, any, any tips that you guys may have to help me definitely be, be, be well received and appreciated. And then my last comment is, yeah, I just wanted to give thanks and show my appreciation for, you know, for you, for you being here. Really appreciate your honesty. Definitely a good addition, you know, to, to PCS. And I definitely look forward to continuing to hear more from you and the projects being made.
Thank you, trustees. Comments, questions? I have a few. In, in general, I was searching through to find a phrase I read in somewhere, I think not in the first part of the report. I didn't find it. So I'm paraphrasing. It does appear to me from your statistics that even though you have some larger gaps at the younger grades, the gaps are closing as they progress. And generally, your scores overall are progressing as the longer they've been with PCS. Is that, am I, did I just make that up or is that?
No, and I would say that was more the case with the grad, up to and including the graduating class of twenty twenty-two. We actually saw that those gaps were eliminated in English Language Arts. Little bit of a wobble last year. We're not quite seeing that, that overwhelming trend. But by and large, we do see that the longer kids are with us, the better their, their scoring in English Language Arts. I think there's a little bit of that in our math scores, but as you can see, there are gaps that persist. And we're really working hard to think about how can we do our math program differently that still allows every student to take higher level math and encourages and motivates them to take higher level math, but provides them with the fundamental skills that they need to be successful and to have access to those courses. So, um, yeah, and I, I, you know, I, I look everywhere. I keep looking for those bright spots. Like who's got a math program that people that don't have those gaps and they're hard to find. They're really hard to find. It seems to be a pretty pervasive issue, particularly post-pandemic. So if you hear about another school that's reducing those gaps, we would love to talk with them. Add to our learning. We all would.
Thanks. My second one, you have my total sympathy on the WASC process. For the new board members, WASC, W A S C, is the accreditation program that schools are subject to. Globally, they get investigated by, by the people from WASC. And then that determines whether they're accredited, which is what helps the students. So very important, and I'm sure Ferris and, and Gurney Saikin probably can find some background information for you about WASC if you need it. It's a big deal for all the schools and again, my sympathy.
It's an important process. It's just, always takes longer than it feels like it should, but it's important.
So on the DEI, first of all, there's no way around, it's a big, hard problem that's not gonna get solved as fast as we want. And I appreciate you recognizing that, and I also appreciate your determination to carry on, because that is really the only way we get anywhere. Dr. Raitano knows that I am one who tries to hold PCS to a pretty high standard with that. And the reason is that you offer such a great educational opportunity for students that if you're not working on DEI, you're just reinforcing status quo. And that is not acceptable to this board, to our community, and I recognize you.
Not at all. Yeah.
So again, hang in there because there's no way around that this is hard. And, and unfortunately, it's gonna take longer than we want. A couple of notes about that. First of all, I do really appreciate the extent to which you're involving students in designing your programs and, and coming up with, what do they wanna hear about? What do they wanna have be recognized for and things like that? That's crucial. And that's a, that's a DEI thing, but it's also just a good way to deal with students and respect them and include them. So I appreciate that. And then this is, this may seem a little odd, but I don't believe I've ever seen a mission statement or the policy statement of a school have the phrase anti-racist in it. And I wanna note that as very significant. I mean, there's
There's a couple of places in the Bay that do.
I could imagine, yeah.
Yeah. But we're working on it, yeah.
I just, you know, there, there's no way around that racism is one of the biggest, deepest afflictions of our society and of the world. And if we don't address it in things like school mission statements, we're missing the point. So I really appreciate that. That was all my comments. And again, thank you for your presentation, trustees. Anything else? Trustee Ross.
Bruce said awful lot of what I, I will repeat because I don't think you could hear it enough. Having been on this board for a number of years and also around when PCS was founded, the progress forward has always been academically very successful. But to see the DEI arts coming in, and I know it takes a long time because I know how long it's taking me to encompass the ideas even in my own head. So I, I appreciate the honesty about it because it's true, judging myself. The the idea of trust is critical. And I think for PCS, it is a big piece of helping your diversity because of the years that passed where it didn't have as welcoming feeling and the support to students of different abilities. Raise our, you name it. And I really appreciate that PCS is doing this. It is an outstanding school in the United States. And as I have said before, these are the student, your students, our students are going to be leaders. And the more that they encompass the reality of what America is, the better off we're going to be. And I like that PCS is reaching out into our community and doing programs, et cetera, because that is really going to help from my point of view, on the, on the trust. The, I wanna say the involvement of your students in your programs, I really, really like, especially the different awards and that they will be student nominated. And that, that's hard to do. I've been connected with a lot of student groups and it's hard. Then the popularity contest and all of that sort of stuff. But I know that you will, you are introducing these topics and it's, it's wonderful for the students to have that responsibility in identifying and watching and seeing what their, their fellow students are doing. See. And then one last thing. And I tried to find it because I know I, I saw it in here. You must take four AP classes and pass them.
Five.
Five, okay. Ooh, even more, five. What about a student if they are not able to pass? And I know you're doing a lot of student support. Does that mean they have to go to a different school to graduate?
No, no. What, what that tells us when we see stu, we monitor student progress. The nice thing about being a small school is we can monitor student progress pretty carefully. And all of our courses are reverse designed. So starting in seventh grade, for example, they're already practicing the type of writing and analysis they need to do on historical documents so that when they're ready for AP US history and AP world history, they, they had practiced for three years of that kind of work. So what happens is that when students struggle in those AP classes, we, we know it, we know the kid, we can implement some additional supports. For some of our kids, it's a lot of additional supports. And it involves a lot of one-on-one tutoring and coaching and encouraging. But, yeah, I mean, we believe that all kids can be successful with that level of work with the right supports in place. And, you know, and we do what we need to do to make that happen. So, I mean, I'm, I'm picturing in my head some wonderful students from last year's graduating class that, you know, it took a small village to get them across the stage on time because they just had some things to finish up. And, and yet they successfully completed their five AP classes and were able to take those credits with them. So I don't, I don't, we don't see a lot of kids, we don't counsel kids to leave when they're struggling. We surround them with extra care.
Just a clarification, but if you were a bigger high school, there would be more options. But their, their schedule is, their academic plan requires them to take those courses because there's so many options. So, so what I'm hearing is, is your approach is to support them to be successful in those classes, not let's say, out of those AP classes.
Correct. I mean, all tenth graders take AP world history because that is the history class we offer in tenth grade. So it, we just don't have a large enough staff to offer a wide variety of different options. And because that's their only option, we are obligated to provide the level of support that they need to be successful. I think we are obligated because of our charter, but I also feel like we are morally obligated. If, if we welcome a kid to our school community, we're obligated to help ensure their success.
And I would say that, I would say that 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 there is, like, there are conversations that I have with families about, like, when kids are feeling like, I don't know that I can be successful at PCS, and really helping them to understand, like, what are the benefits of them being here, especially as a BIPOC student within the very highly competitive college world that we live in now. It's very hard to stand out. And so trying to help them understand the benefits of that and also supporting our educators to make sure that they are like building enough scaffolds and accommodations and support so that all students can be successful. Because it's not just about, like, the student. Sometimes it's not the student that needs support. Sometimes it's the adult that needs the support, right? And so that's the other portion of what it is that we're doing too. And there is also conversation amongst our staff last year and this year around, like, what does, what does anti-racism and equity work look like as it pertains to the AP system? How inclusive is the AP system and the college board in the first place? So those are conversations that we're having and it's a longer, longer, bigger conversation, I think, for us.
When a student and their family decides to not continue, is it on the basis of what, what they face with the AP classes?
There's a lot of different reasons.
There are so many different reasons. Some of them, I'm sorry. There are so many different reasons. Um, some of them, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting. Some, some student, uh, we survey students when they leave PCS. Um, and we're actually at the beginning stages of a, a nutrition study to kind of dig deeper and find out more. But, uh, from the past, what we learned is that, um, students leave PCS for a variety of different reasons. Some of it has to do with something as simple as like, I want the traditional high school experience with football game on Friday nights and cheerleaders and the whole nine yards. We're never going to have a field. Well, I don't know about never, but probably not in my time at PCS. Um, and so there's certain things we just can't offer, right? And don't offer. And, and that's a reason people might go elsewhere. Um, sometimes families, you know, are commuting a long distance and I, I worry that with all of the additional construction and the corridors that run north, south in our county, there may be some families who simply cannot make that commute. I mean, I drive from Watsonville, so I, I'm very familiar with the fact that it's now taking me an extra half an hour. Um, so that, that's a reason. Um, some families choose to leave PCS. Some students have, you know, um, anxiety that makes them feel like it might be too big of a bite for them and they'd rather take a, um, participate in a high school program that was less rigorous, which is a reasonable decision. I mean, one of the things about being a school of choice is that families get to make that choice based on whatever their unique circumstances and needs are. And it's not unusual for us to have one student in a family and not another, based on the needs of those unique children. Um, and so, yeah, I mean, there's lots of reasons that people might choose to move to another high school. Um,
Two other things, uh, I have worked at UC for close to 20 years. And to have watched the change in diversity at, at that school is absolutely amazing. And it has taken a long time. It is not complete, but it is happening. So keep going. And sometimes the faculty are the hardest ones to get. You know, as far as a diverse faculty. See, I think I've absolutely forgotten the last one. Except that I really appreciate the learn, the, uh, listening and implementation that I have seen at PCS. So, thank you.
And I thank you for your partnership in this work. The, the county office of education staff have been tremendously supportive. Ferris is always wonderful. If I have a question and he doesn't know the answer, he'll find somebody who does and help to support this work in ongoing basis. And I know we'll be talking again at our next charter subcommittee. Um, but if any of you have questions and you're not on that committee and you think of them later, um, you're welcome to come visit us at PCS or to give me a call or send an email anytime.
I think we had maybe had one or two more, perhaps.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Green, green letters. Uh, in a sea of information and, and words and numbers and charts and pictures, I, I think I heard or read the words seal of biliteracy. And I don't think you talked about that in your presentation, but, um, I, I wonder whether any of your students have gotten that seal on their diplomas.
Many.
These, pardon?
Many, many, many. Um, usually it's at least a third of our graduating class earn the seal of biliteracy and sometimes it's as many as half.
Is criteria mentioned in this report, the criteria for, for being able to, uh, uh, award a seal of, of biliteracy, bilingualism to the students?
I didn't mention it here because that's not established by our school. It's established by the state, but, um, for example, the most direct pathway would be for a student to, uh, pass an AP language exam and also demonstrate four years of success in, in English. Um, we've quite a few students who, um, every year earn a seal, well, they don't have it, but they earn the seal of biliteracy uh, as being proficient in three languages or more. Um, so we definitely do see that, um, quite a bit.
I know the criteria is very high.
It is. It is. Um, our language studies program can start as early as seventh grade. So quite a few of our students will complete the requirements and go all the way up through AP studies in a language and then take a second one. So it's not uncommon.
Just use throw. Thank you. Um, uh, yeah, I want to thank you for, um, this presentation and all of the work that has gone into, um, DIA. Um, they, um, I, I love adding that of accessibility and prioritizing access. Um, I had a question about the proposed math changes that are kind of bubbling up, um, with, um, adding more, um, entry points. Um, uh, how, how are you going to make sure that that doesn't, uh, I guess, kind of solidify those gaps? Like, it's not like they're going to go into a track of like, okay, you're starting at a lower level and you're going to stay there. It's trying to kind of catch them up, right? I kind of wanted to just clarify that.
Yeah, well, that work is currently in process, so I can't tell you definitively, but what it looks like is we currently have a pre-algebra class and then an algebra one class. Um, and so some students test out of that pre-algebra class and start with algebra one, but what we're finding is that, um, the, when, when you overlay the, um, common core standards for pre-algebra and seventh and eighth grade, um, there's actually, if you focus just on pre-algebra, a number of math skills that are missed in the middle years, if we start with just a pre-algebra class. And so what, what the math department and our math tosa are suggesting is that we create a two-year sequence in middle school, um, where students can start with, I don't know what we're going to call it, but let's say pre-algebra A and pre-algebra B or middle school math A and B. I don't know what they'll be called. Um, the idea is that, uh, we're catching all of those kids up in middle school so that they're ready to start algebra one in high school right away. It's not unusual to have students in a variety of different math levels for, for a number of reasons at PCS in different grade levels. Um, there is opportunity for students to accelerate if they want to take math over the summer. So that's not unusual. What, what we really want to focus on though is that that opportunity to start with algebra one and hit the ground running, um, is available to all of our students. Um, and so what we're finding is that if we take extra time to build those skills that students may be missing so that in past, they might've had to take pre-algebra one or two times while they bolstered skills that were really pre-pre-algebra skills. Um, if we help them bolster those skills over a longer period of time, then they're able to catch up with their peers, or at least that's the theory. So we'll let you know how that works.
Thank you.
Working, or I'll be meeting with the math department after fall break, um, to work with them more closely on it. So we'll have more to share later.
Great. I'm, I'm super excited to hear that. And, um, I mean, it sounds like a good, uh, well-intentioned, really good plan. And so I look forward to hearing more about it. Um, and I also wanted to highlight, uh, one of the points that you mentioned about housing and how that is a really difficult. Um, it's really difficult here in the county to attract, um, really good talent when it is so expensive to live here. Um, and so, um, definitely, um, I'm thinking, I just want to kind of put it out there that, you know, the state definitely needs to be investing a lot more in workforce housing for educators and paths to, um, homeowner.
Literally.
Um, and you know, that all of the, you know, efforts that we, that we try to do, um, for diversity and equity and access, um, does rely on, you know, or for faculty really relies on, you know.
And for students.
Yeah.
Like.
I know.
Our families are going to get pushed out pretty soon. It's expensive. Like, it's ridiculous.
Yes, I know, but like, I, and yeah, just the dynamics of San Cruz County and the fact that, yeah, it is such a long commute from South County and the, the, you know, historical and racial dynamics in that and the accessibility of that. So I just, I wanted to put that out there, mention that and, you know, uh, thank you for everything that you've done to try to bridge those, those gaps, you know, in, um, in equity. So.
Let's partner and figure it out because it's pretty awful.
Just any further comments or questions? I have just one little thing that I'm very interested in your attrition study and just want to ask that you, um, uh, bring it out with the, with our subcommittee that needs you, reportedly, and they will be interested.
Well, I will be because we're partnering with Dr. Savad in that work. So, um, and others in the county, as I understand.
Right, on that subject.
I have to say, uh, uh, Dr. Toritano actually asked for this several months ago and, and I've been lagging on a little bit, so we'll get on it and make sure to share that with you, uh, very soon.
Great, good. Okay. Well, thank you once again very much. Um, really appreciate your good work. Thank you for your presentation as well. And, yeah. Good luck finishing all the, well, not finishing, but carrying on with all your hard work.
Thank you so much. And please come visit PCS anytime.
Thank you to the board members and the members who showed up. Trustees, we are now to item 11.3. This is, um, for us to consider a, um, a bylaw amendment regarding meeting conduct. Mainly having to do with how we deal with public participation. And, um, uh, I wanted to ask Dr. Savad, could you say a little bit about this, and I suppose Veronese, the, what it includes our practice is current bylaws, right?
Correct. Uh, so as a result of, uh, of the pandemic and some of the, the limitations that were for access, uh, if you recall, we adopt, adopted, uh, some changes to our policies to allow for people to be able to join via Zoom and to be able to, uh, provide public report, a public, uh, comments through via Zoom. However, there have been several incidents, uh, recently where folks, um, where different entities like the, the city council of Watsonville, as well as Captole experienced, uh, Zoom bombing, which is a term for people who, uh, utilize their access to be able to, uh, to make inappropriate commentary, racist commentary, insulting commentary. And because of the nature of Zoom, um, there was really very disruptive, it's time and, um, and was, was very distressing to those who, uh, heard those comments. And there's obviously a delay in, in being able to, um, you know, take somebody out of the meeting and, and try to make sure that they don't, they, they don't turn. And so I, uh, the reason this item is here is for your consideration to modify the policy so that public commentary would be required to be in person. Uh, people would, we would continue providing Zoom as a, uh, as a, uh, a way for people to have access so that they're able to hear the meetings. And, um, but we would remove the aspect, the virtual aspect of the commentary so that people would not be able to, um, get on Zoom and, and be able to make that comment. And of course, as with all things, there's always a give and take, right? We're, we're eliminating the access, uh, the potential access of people who might utilize Zoom to be able to, and they're unable to make their report, but it is, uh, something that several, uh, folks have been, several government agencies and Brown Act, uh, held agencies are, are implementing. So we didn't want to wait until we had our own, uh, negative experience with Zoom. We thought that this might be a preemptive approach and, um, and then if people needed to make commentary, they'd be able to come here and do so as they have in the past.
Proceeds, this is a, we're, we need to talk this over and figure this out. So let me first see if, if, uh, trustee Alvarez Delgado has any thoughts or comments. And you'll be able to come back.
So I just want to clarify, um, convenience with Zoom to be able to address the board to make any comments, um, isn't really the only way, uh, to address it not in person, as we would say in. Um, people can still write in, right? Whether it's emo, whether it's a letter and receive in the board. And then if we determine that it's not, uh, it does, that does mean our policy that it can be read aloud, right? So even if a person can't attend the meeting, they can still be able to, um, address the board uh, with means outside of Zoom.
That's correct. So there's really two different, uh, methods. One is the traditional correspondence, which would be when, when the, the board president says, is there any correspondence that was uh, communicated in, in between after the, the packet went out and that viewer, that in some cases is right to the board. Um, and then the additional piece, which is included, uh, if you read the, I think it's still there. Look at the, the first page of your, uh, under public comment, there is a, um, a paragraph that says to submit a comment to be read aloud on your behalf, either listed or not listed on the meeting agenda, please send a comment no longer than 300 words to Veronese's email no later than 2:00 PM on, on the day of the board meeting. And so that would be, um, uh, an opportunity for people to utilize email to submit a message. And as long as it's appropriate, it would be read into the record.
Other comments or questions?
Should that be included in the policy? Or the?
Should which?
The, uh, the 300 words or less correspondence. Rather than just on our agenda.
I wonder what the origin of that on the agenda is.
Believe that, I mean, this was taken, you know, these were some of the practices that we took during, during the pandemic. That's, uh,
But it's a good point that we, possibly our entire procedure, including the emailing the comment should be mentioned in the bylaw.
Yeah, yeah, we can include that in there. This is definitely above and beyond the, the, the minimum requirement of the Brown Act, which requires somebody to be here uh, to, to speak. So these are additional steps that you take to allow for, uh, the public to be able to comment.
I have a couple of those.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I think it's really important to prioritize accessibility, but also protect the public and us from really, you know, this vitriol that is in society right now really amplified. Um, and so I, I also just wanted to highlight maybe the, the inaccessibility of our meetings right now for a lot of working families, uh, being that we meet at 4:00 PM. Um, and I, 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 I know it works for me better because we get out of here earlier and we're not here until nine o'clock at night. Um, but also I wanted to bring that up, uh, and I know that Rose previously, I mean, she mentioned to me that it was something of a priority for her to have that changed. And so I wanted to bring that up in this as well, when we're, you know, reducing the accessibility of folks to virtually comment, uh, during, you know, the meeting if they want to. Um, maybe we should revisit the, the, is it, revisit maybe for you guys, but visit for me for the first time, considering, um, making this meeting more accessible to working families. Uh, so I wanted to mention that as well.
Moving to talk about, we actually did talk about it right when Rose left, so it's very recent that we talked it over and stayed with what we have, but it's a good one.
Something we, yeah, revisit in December.
Yeah. That's when we set our, our officers and so on, so we can. Um, see, well, I, I actually can think of three possible ways that someone remotely could engage a little more than having to send their comment before the meeting starts, which then doesn't give someone the ability to hear some testimony and then want to chime in about it or give additional information. One way that I've heard of is that anyone that would want to participate by, uh, more than just watching and listening, though by submitting comments or testifying or something, would have to pre-register. And there would be a, there'd be like a web form and they'd pre-register, give their name and email and stuff like that. So there's accountability for them. And then we can allow them in. So that's one, and I've heard of groups doing that. Um, uh, so that's one possibility. A little more administration to that. I recognize that. Um, secondly, um, uh, some groups such as. Secondly, um, some groups such as like the city council in Santa Cruz, they let you email them during the meeting and someone is monitoring the emails. Now, that's a little trickier, but because the timing has to be right, someone has to be almost like constantly watching. So I don't know the mechanics of how they handle it, but some public bodies do accept email commentary in in the mid, in the middle of the discussion. It obviously that's tricky, someone has to then get the message and read it. Someone would have to read it ahead of time to make sure that it's not the negative stuff that you don't want. Tricky area. The third way this that I think we've actually done here, but maybe I'm just mixing up, I've been in too many Zoom meetings is where there is not the, you know, the sidebar with anybody opened up their comments. But there is a question box and you pose your question, the question goes into a moderator and they can filter. And so they can decide whether that question goes out to the whole group or to the panelists, in this case to the board or so on. So and that's a, that's built into Zoom, that's some kind of like a webinar set up in Zoom or something. So again, a little more setup and keeping an eye on it as it goes, but it would be a way you know, that we, so we wouldn't completely cut off the ability of a person in good faith offering information because they can't get here from Washtenaw. So anyway, I I'm curious what you think about that from the staff point of view and then also board members. Because I I'm I'm a little concerned that we we have a couple awful experiences a couple of years ago during the shutdowns. And I don't want that, I don't want that ever again. And I, and so very concerned with that, but I want us to not sacrifice the the ability of the public to be with us in this anyways, if they can.
I personally like the first option of pre-registering, but I don't know if we can enforce that. I'm assuming our current bylaws were based on GAMIT. And the way that it's written in public participation specifically states that we cannot request anybody to sign in, complete a questionnaire or otherwise provide their name or other information as a condition of attending the meeting.
I don't remember that, but I I guess.
So we might have to look at that if we can legally do that virtually. But I like an idea, I personally would see that. Um, I mean, with that, is that just for just for attending but not commenting, right? But we can still require maybe some pre-registration to have be have the ability to comment? Uh, is that a possibility or?
Oh, I think the phrase he was quoting in our bylaw is basically if if you want to, you could be in in the room without identifying yourself. But if you want to address the board, you have, that prohibits us from requiring them to identify themselves.
Well, I I think it's confusing because the word participation, what is participation is just listening or speaking as well? I think it just sounded that.
And if I if I could add to that, so um there, we've been advised by attorneys that if somebody chooses to complete the card that we have, the blue cards that Veronese has, and they choose not to identify themselves, that we would not tell that they can't speak, even though that is our protocol, that we can't tell them, well, you haven't identified yourself, therefore you're not allowed to speak. And so again, though, I think that the Brown Act, that's the minimum of the Brown Act, those are the requirements for somebody. I think everything that you do virtually is above and beyond that, as long as it's not considered a discriminatory practice. I think that having something like here, you don't have to identify yourself. However, we do have an additional extra option that goes above and beyond the requirements of the Brown Act. And so there isn't a a Zoom-based process to require somebody to pre-register. Would not violate the part that says you can come here and participate in person and and you don't have to identify yourself.
And how do we verify that information? Because anybody could just come in and give a fake name and address and.
Mean in person.
Or, yeah, in person or online as well.
A way that pre-registration works is you submit your information and the system emails you back to with the email you gave them. And there's a confirmation or a ticket or whatever it is that gets you into. So if you're not older than email, you're not, you know, moving someone else, you're not going to get that email. So that sort of makes sure at least we know who it is. But but, you know, people disguise themselves all the time, so.
And you could make a fake email and, yeah, I mean, there is, it's not, none of these systems are perfect. And I think if somebody really wants to um figure out a way to work around them, it really is just creating additional layers to make it more difficult for 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 somebody to misuse it.
But in the same vein, if it's coming over the internet or through Zoom, we can also just cancel them. And from what I under, not cancel, but you know.
Silence and remove.
Silence and remove. And once they have been removed, they can't come back in. It's the way I have understood it.
You can formally use Zoom's control to remove, then Zoom blocks them.
Yes.
It's it's, they can just create a new Zoom account.
That particular one, and if they come in the next meeting and do the same thing. It's not like stopping someone from speaking publicly. That's far more intricate, you know, in person.
So how should we proceed here?
So what would be useful, I think, would be possibly to for this group to direct a policy committee based on what you'd like to do. It could be that the policy committee spends more time on it, working with staff and brings back a policy change that could be brought onto the December meeting and you can make a decision to support that. You could give a a heads, you know, give a some direction right now as to which way you want the policy committee to. If there's, if there's feeling like you want to limit the Zoom option uh for commenting or if you'd like a pre-registration. Uh, so really, I think that the appropriate step would be for or to and for the for the president to give some direction to the policy committee as to how you'd like to proceed.
Member of the policy committee along with Melissa, and there's a vacancy on the committee. I I I like it, I'm willing to put a little time in on. And I I wonder if also if there's anything out there in the way of new legal advice that we might be able to follow.
And I know that the city of Washtenaw and city of Capitol just.
Yeah.
C S P A might be, or C C P.
Sorry, what are their new policy?
Well, they they eliminated the option to to comment on.
They sort of do what you described initially.
The, yeah, the basically.
You can watch for your hands.
Correct, you have to kind of in person to participate.
Um, will the policy committee draft maybe multiple um, like, you know, so we can have a selection of, we we have these different ideas of maybe a pre-registration or possibly, you know, eliminating Zoom participation totally and just have it view attendance. Could we get that, multiple policies that we can kind of compare and see which route we really want to go? Or are we going to have to decide today what route we want to go?
Definitely don't have to decide today. And my fellow as a committee might work and it might reach just like, oh, here's the perfect idea that incorporates what everybody has expressed and then bring back one idea, but if we can, then we bring back alternatives. And my goal would be that we try to do that for the December meeting, which by the way is going to be early, but a week early, but that's, I think we ought to get this settled. So and I'm willing to put a little time in.
And policy, uh, there's usually two readings of it. You know, first, we can accept if we want to, but if we.
Yeah.
Playing around with words. Uh, so that there's, it's not, you have to do it right now.
Okay, so.
Could I add one other thing to consider for the policy? Is I do, I do not like that we go till ten thirty. I I think that's inappropriate. And I would like to suggest, depending on what we decide next month, as our time is limited, our meeting to three to four hours. Or, I mean, I think, have have we ever gone to four hours here?
That's that I know of, but not not in our, not in my times. I mean, the only time that we've had a lot longer is when we have a long list of public comments. And usually that's, you know, it's kind of a controversial topic of some kind where there's hundreds.
And we can always extend it, like it says, you know, I have loaded the board, go have fifteen minute increments or whatever. But I think four-hour meetings and my my brain is, you know, sunk to a size of walnut.
Well, could you email me as chair of the policy committee? And with that point, I'll make sure that we bring it up in our discussion, if you don't mind. Thank you. So then as board president, I'm going to direct the policy committee to take this on and and do his best to report back at the December meeting.
President, sorry, President Matt Allen, with the vacancy in the policy committee, do you want to, in your authority, appoint someone to fill that vacancy?
If there was someone interested.
Yes, I am interested.
Good, thank you. Um, okay, then um, as a side action of this meeting, um, acting as president of the board, I'm appointing Edward Spron to the policy committee, and you have options to join other committees as well, by the way, so.
Thank you, I'm honored.
So um, maybe Veronese, you could kind of set up a meeting of the three of us and with whatever background information you guys can. If if any, if there is any copy of the existing bylaws. Great, thank you. Okay, board, we have more things to do. We're now to session twelve, new business. The first item is twelve point one, the school plan for student achievement at the our alternative education programs. And here is Dr. Isaac Gonzalez.
Hello, good evening. I just wanted to first say welcome to our new trustees. Uh, this is the first meeting I've been here with you all. And so it's wonderful to have both of you here and part of our team. And I want to thank you in advance for your, all of your support for our programs because I know probably one of the big reasons why you joined this was to support our court and community school programs and our career advancement charter, which is such a big part of this organization. So thank you so much. Um, so we're here today to talk about our school plans for student achievement for all three of our programs, our court school, our community school. And then my colleague and friend Sony will present on the career advancement charter. And I believe I have a small slide deck for us today. All right, oh, yeah, no problem. Um, so I I can jump right in. So I wanted to do a little bit of overview regarding funding for our programs and what is this school plan for student achievement today? Uh, so our programs are funded, uh, there's a big pie where there's a lot of different funding streams that come in, um, including LCFF funds, other state funds, special education funds, grants and title funds. So title funds that are in the very slim plans that you see before you are probably one of the smallest pieces of this pie. But it's also the most, one of the most regulated pieces of the pie because they're federal funds. And we earn these monies from our students. And it is the reason why there's a plan that goes with it and the compliance is because they're really designed to meet unique needs for students. And so they're they're small funds, but they're very special to us. And they prove, and and to spend the funds, we get a lot of input for them. And so that's the background for funding. I also wanted to highlight a few overviews, uh, overview and changes that are coming up. Additionally, uh, with with our funding for LCFF funds, the LCAP, there's a new requirement. You'll see me in February presenting a mid-year report about the LCAP before our traditional meetings in June for the new LCAP. Also, there is a new template for the LCAP this year, so you'll learn all about that, which is exciting. And lastly, I wanted to piggyback on PCS's presentation because it is also our WASK year this year. So you will also be hearing about our revised school-wide goals um, and all of that in early next year, and we'll have our visit in March. So if you're new to the board, you get, this is a great year because you're going to learn a lot about our programs. All right, and the next slide, please. Um, and so I did, I I already covered the SIPSA overview. These are small federal funds and it works in conjunction with the LCAP. So if you look at the LCAP and you look at the SIPSA, this is the end of a three-year plan for the LCAP and our goals are aligned. And then we'll have new LCAP goals next year and some more revisions. And go ahead for the next slide, please. All right, I wanted to honor our community and give a lot of gratitude for not only our internal employees, but also our families, our students, our community partners. So this picture is a recent picture, this is at Sequoia Schools. Uh, we had about twelve families in attendance and our amazing community organizer, our South County Administrator Crystal, um, our counselors, our families came to the table. And this is, this is part of the development of the SIPSA plan that you have before you tonight. Uh, we also will have a North County meeting similar in December. And so just really want to honor the people that make our program so special, starting with our students and our phenomenal team too. We have just a really great team. And so, and next slide, please. And this year, I won't read all of uh, all of the data here, but this is the, this is the data that the plan was built off of because we're current in, currently in our data gathering phase where we are doing our surveys early this year. So we are doing all of our LCAP, we we call it's an LCAP, WASK, everything survey. So we asked all of the questions, we revised it this year and we're currently getting it. So this plan was built off of this feedback, which came in the spring of last year. And overwhelmingly, um, our students feel safe at school, they feel supported, they have access to counseling. And they want more of that, they want more opportunities to be in the community, more more opportunities for support. And I will say with, uh, since the pandemic, we have had an increase in staffing, which is excellent. So we have increased our counseling staff and we've increased our by literate team. And so we have more, more people, more caring adults on campus now, I would say more than ever, which is good. All right, next slides here. Okay, so this slide deck also is for both the community school and the court school. If you look at both plans, they're nearly identical. And that is because the vast majority of our plan, our schools is is our community school with a very small number of students in our court school. And so the the goals, overarching goals are aligned. And we do have our students who who go sometimes to the court school program and then come back out and come to our community school program. So they are intentionally the same. So our first goal, the bulk of our funds, um, our Title I funds, uh, go to our personnel. And so it is our goal to have classified instructional staff and additional team members on all of our sites. So every single program has assistants in the class to support our students. And that's, that's, that's a big, big part of our program is that we have instructional aids at every program. So we have small student to teacher ratio and lots of support and professional development. So Title Two Part A is really about, it's called improving teacher quality. It's really about continuous professional development. And so those funds help us pay for opportunities for our team members to attend things like conferences, different trainings, there's always something new to learn. So this is our first goal for our court and community school programs. And the names there are 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 names of people who are funded by these, these, these funds. There's a face to 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 all of these soon. And that's goal one, and then we have just one more goal for our court and community school program, and that is on the next line. Um, so we do provide funding for our foster youth program through title fundings. And so this helps support our foster youth liaisons. And they are throughout the county, not solely in alternative education programs. They support foster youth throughout Santa Cruz County. This is, this is a picture from from last year at this time when they presented the Inside Ed. And it was just, um, it was a wonderful presentation of their program model. And that will take us to the end of this presentation regarding school plans for student achievements for our community school and for our court school. And it is wonderful to see everyone again. And I'm here for any, any questions, if you have any regarding this plan or anything.
Yes, trustee.
I just wanted to ask what the LCAP is.
Yes.
As like you explained about, I don't really know what it is.
I so appreciate that question. And and anytime you have any questions about our continuous improvement plan, would be happy, happy. I so appreciate that question, and, and anytime you have any questions about our continuous improvement plan, would be happy, happy to discuss them with you. So the local control accountability plan is a three-year plan and that, um, basically focuses on the LCFF funds that we get, and so we get base funding, and then we get supplemental concentration funding. And so at the heart of the local control accountability plan is ensuring that you're listening to all of your community members, your educational partners, and that you're designing a plan to meet the needs, and it outlines the funding that you receive and the dollars spent, and it focuses specifically on the supplemental concentration funding, which is funded from, um, s- students who qualify as being at their uh, low income, these are the, the terms that are used, English learners, foster youth. And so you get a specific, you know, boost in funding for, for certain students, and then you need to account for, well, how, how are you using funds to, to address, uh, student needs in, in all student groups and specifically those? And so it's a, it's a big plan, and I'll present in February, you'll get to view the current plan and our progress that we've made on our current plan, so that's actually kind of good timing for, for your joining this team. And then in June is our new plan based on all the feedback we're getting this year and through our WASC process, and then that'll set the stage of how, how we're using our funds for next year and, and setting goals for three years, and we presented in, in conjunction with our awesome business department because it goes along with the COE budget, so the two have to go together. Um, so really, it's a, it's a big part of it, it's about funding, and then it's, um, how, how your programs are using those funds to meet the needs of students.
Okay, thank you very much.
Accountability is the key word in the, uh, LCAP.
Yep, lots of accountability.
Trustees, other questions, comments? I think you know how much we value you, and this has, once again, been a great board, thank you.
Yeah, this is the best, and, and y'all join the best, best board too, so it's, it's, it's gonna be fun.
So if I, if I could, so these are actual items, we will need, uh, a motion, I believe, for um, approval of the SIPSA for the community school. It could be the same motion to approve both, one for community school, one for, and court school, um, or two separate motions.
Trustees, I, I can see the simplicity of one motion to cover both, um, uh, and this is on, I just referred item twelve point one, which is the school plan for student achievement, you know, for the alternative, the court school and the community schools. Have to come to the charter, yes, yes, everyone. Um, so I need a motion to approve, and it'll be on the roll call.
We can motion to approve.
Motion by Nichols. Second, second by Estrada. We'll call it, please.
And then can I get a clarification if the motion is for approving both at the same time or one?
That was the way I was trying to encourage it to be made, yes.
Let's screw it together.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your clarification.
Student trustee, uh, trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Yes.
Trustee Ulta?
Yes.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Roth?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
President Van Allen.
Hi, motion carries and sleep.
Before, uh, before, uh, Jen asked, so I want to thank her, she actually spent the day at Harbor High School. There is, we've had some, uh, unfortunate, uh, activity with, uh, some gang activity in our, in our community, and, um, and Jen has been, uh, supporting the Santa Cruz City Schools and was there all day, uh, supporting the school with, uh, supervision and ensuring the safety of students, I just wanted to thank her for that, she had to reschedule her day to, to be able to be there to, to support the school.
I appreciate that, I was an honorary pirate today, and they were so welcoming, amazing program there, so.
Thanks.
I was green.
Trustees, we're now at item twelve point two, the similar school planning student achievement for, um, uh, the, uh, our school, the. Early, because this is necessary for the career advancement charter, and here is Ms. Sanson.
Good evening, welcome new trustees, I'm Sony Garret Sanson, I'm, uh, director here at the county office, and I'm here this evening to share with you the SIPSA for the CAC. Very similar to what you heard now from my colleague Jen, and also some differences that I'll highlight. Um, I wanted to start with, excuse me, our students. This is a photo from, uh, our culinary class this fall. Some of these students do make up our student advisory committee, uh, which informs us around what is working and what they'd like to see changed. Uh, we are an adult high school diploma program, we also offer high school equivalency for adult learners, so eighteen and up. We have, uh, programming here at the COE across the street at the annex. We're at Sequoia Schools, we're also at the Probation Success Center, North and South County, and we are in our correctional facilities here locally, so at the main jail, at Roundtree, and at the Blaine Street Women's Facility. So, um, we have the highest enrollment ever, this is reflecting twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, over three hundred and twenty students enrolled, and then what we measure is what we call persistence data, meaning that those students were enrolled with us for at least one semester, and that number was a hundred and eighty-six students. So we're really proud of those numbers, many of our students come and go, um, particularly in corrections, they, they might start with us and then leave, come back, et cetera. Um, and then I added here that many, I would say most of our students are working either part or full-time. They're caring for young children and balancing adult life responsibilities. On the next slide is, uh, just a quick overview of what this document that you have is. Um, again, reflecting the commitment to continuous improvement and providing the accountability, um, for those funds that we receive. Next slide, please. And the way that your plan, the plan that you have is organized is outlined there, um, which includes a description of how we involve our community, address resource inequities, and then the goals there, as, as Jen stated, they're aligned with our LCAP, which is our big plan around accountability. Um, and then lastly, at the end of your plan, you'll see the budget summary. We receive CSI funds, comprehensive school improvement funds, which are based, is based on our graduation rate. So how our student achievement is measured, I, I laid it out here for you, um, the dotted line indicating the metrics that work best for us. So as I stated, the CAC is an adult, uh, high school diploma program, it's not the same as court and community. However, I would add that a lot of our court community students, um, from alternative ed who need more time or who stop and then come back to school do, do find us at the CAC. So the metrics below the line again are the ones that are most meaningful for us because the CAS science test is not a meaningful measure for our adult students, although we do, we do participate in, in those assessments. And so some of the things you've heard me mention around the persistence data, we also use surveys to measure school connectedness, and we look at credit accrual, which is, uh, the percent of students earning forty-five credits or more per year. And then lastly, the first bullet, um, is our cost assessment. It is the, the measure for adult ed programs here in our county and, and elsewhere, and so we have a developmentally appropriate assessment tool that we use for adult learners. So on the next slide, goal one is around engagement, and so, um, here we have needs, outcomes, and then the activities, what we're using the money for essentially. Um, and so around engagement, we're committed to removing barriers, uh, increasing opportunities for students. And so some of the things that we use our CSI funds, um, are to staff a bilingual administrator, two bilingual transition specialists, a bilingual community organizer, and a bilingual guidance counselor, and I felt it was important to include that bilingual in front of those, uh, job titles because uh, many of our students prefer to speak in their primary native language, which is Spanish. Um, and I'm very proud to say that about seventy-five percent of our CAC staff is bilingual. Uh, and so we really are committed to meeting students where they are. In goal two, um, around achievement, we, we have there again needs, outcomes, and strategies. And in those outcomes, you see the cost is measured there, or sorry, mentioned there, so that's how we, we look for gains to see if our students are improving. Every student, uh, takes the cost test upon enrollment. Some of the activities there on the right, the funds help us to, um, staff an ESL teacher who teaches two sections that are Sequoia building, we're looking to add a section here. Um, and then provide instructional aid support as well. Student workshops are something that we've added to the CAC over the last eight or nine months, and some of the, um, workshop session names are there for you to see. And then lastly, community engagement is our third big goal. Um, this is really a focus on outreach and, and partnership. And so we look at how we're reaching our students and, and measure enrollment, attendant, attend, and attendance data. Um, on the right, that's a picture of our CTE culinary teacher, Brenda Quintero, and she, um, has her own business outside of, outside of school, and so she tabled at our career fair event last spring. Um, and that, that's something that we did to provide that focus on career development and exposure for our students. We also, um, have our transition specialist doing the outreach, and we're part of the Adult Education Consortium here in Santa Cruz County. Um, and so that, again, those are the activities that we use the CSI funds to help, um, to help pay for. And then next slide are some of the significant actions that, um, that I think I've highlighted actually through the last few minutes. Um, that we have allocated our CSI funds to provide counseling and outreach. The intake is a really important process, a really important, important part of enrollment where we get to know the student and learn, learn about them, what they need, and what their post-secondary goals are. Uh, we continue to need technology equipment, so we're, um, having to, um, not refill, replenish as, as things get broken or aged out. Um, the transition services I've mentioned with our transition support specialist, ESL teacher, and then of course our instructional aid support. Um, and so I didn't say this, I think it's in the budget, it's about two hundred thousand dollars is what we get for our CSI money, so as Jen said, it's a small piece of the pie, but the CAC is small, and so we, we can, we make that money go far. Um, and then lastly, I think we will always get that money because it's based on our graduation rate, and our grad rate is around thirty to thirty-three percent. And that's not a reflection of how well our students are or are not doing, that's a reflection of the program design, and then every student who comes in is listed as a twelfth grader. So we don't have a traditional cohort model. Um, we typically graduate close to eighty to a hundred students per year. Um, so our real graduation rate is actually higher, it just doesn't always, it doesn't reflect on the dashboard. And then, um, that last slide is, uh, a thanks, a thanks to all of you for your ongoing support. Um, that is part of our team on the left, and that is, um, a student. Well, she's not a student, she's a baby of a student who's in our Plaza Comunitarias class, which is a Spanish literacy program. Uh, and her name's Annabelle, and she's there in our early care classroom while, while her grandma is next door, um, learning to read and write in Spanish, so I wanted you all to see that. And then just lastly, we have contact information on the last slide, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Trustees, comments or questions? And trustee. Sorry, I'm so. Alvarez Delgado, I think I said it wrong here earlier, so. Other comments?
Other comment? I just want to say how impressed I am by the fact that enrollment is not only not going down, but it's the highest it's ever been. I think that is unusual, I think that's, uh, even unheard of, you know, especially in the, in these days. I think it's a good testament as to the program and the quality of the program. Also very impressive is just the fact that we don't really promote very much, and it all seems to be word of mouth. So students are not only attending, but they're liking it enough to tell their friends or family, their neighbors about it, and we have this amazing program in our own community that's is, is not following the trend, you know, across California, but anything leading, leading the example, so. Just wanted to call that out and to congratulate you and then the team because I know it's not easy, there's a lot of work that goes into it, but I definitely feel like the, the results, uh, reflect, you know, the, the program itself, so, so congratulations.
Thank you, trustee Sanchez.
I just love that we have CAC and PCS, and we're serving uh, a spectrum, and, uh, I agree with you that your enrollment is going up. Yes, oh, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Roth, and it is not a WASC year for us, just for the record. Of next year.
I want to say the same thing, that, that it is such an interesting thing to me that we have these two charter schools, kind of even at opposite ends of our county sort of, you know, and they speak to really different things, but it's about educating and giving people the chance to do better in life, and whether they're, you know, fresh out of, uh, junior high or middle school, go, go getting into a, a high school program that could get them into Harvard, that's one goal, I guess. Or whether there's someone that wants a better job and needs a high school, you know, with, uh, credits to be able to do that, or just to speak better or just to write. Those are very different things, but they are in many ways the same thing, because it's about people getting a chance to be better, and so I really appreciate this program and Dr. Sabuz's um, leadership in forming it, and, um, Sony, your work on being such a great leader, a, a great, a really important school.
Thank you, trustee Van Allen, appreciate that.
And if I could add, kudos to Sony and her leadership, um, and the design, this really is, uh, a program that is represented, it's, it's, it's a a representation of our commitment to equity and, uh, offering access and opportunity to our community, and, and it continues to blossom and grow, and, and um, we were recently featured on KION, uh, Sean Patrick, who, uh, teaches a pre-apprenticeship program, which is kind of one of are the programs that we offer, uh, for, uh, construction technologies, was recently featured in the Roundtree facility. And, um, and one of the students in that, uh, mentioned that this was a second chance at life, and that this was something that was, and um, I think that this program is, is designed really to build on the strengths of our community and what they bring, and and open up as many opportunities as possible, so really grateful to Sony's leadership and the amazing team that does everything they can to support this, the, these wonderful students of ours. Congratulations, Sony.
Thank you, Ferris. Yeah, you are all part of, uh, changing lives, for sure, and having great impact, uh, in our community, so thank you for your support.
Trustees, we need a motion to approve this plan.
Oh, the, the motion to approve this plan?
Motion by Ross, second by Nichols, and we need a roll call, this is item twelve point three.
Trustee, uh, student trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Yes.
Trustee Ulta?
Yes.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Roth?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
President Van Allen.
Hi, motion carries and sleep, all present, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustees, we ran out to, um, some resolutions, um, first one is number twelve point four, recognizing November as National Home, Homeless Youth Awareness Month. And, um, I think there was a little glitch in getting the resolutions out to the rest, so. Do, do you want to report on it, Sandra?
I'll, I'll say that I got them, um, really, when, when Veronese posted this all online, I was able to access what resolutions were coming forward. And, and I was so busy this week that I, I, I didn't read them until I, I sent them to, to you and Ed, so.
Do you have any comment on this particular one, I think?
Oh, well, it hurts that there are homeless youth, and, and that they're, they're in that situation, and I, uh, I, I feel like, uh, my heart goes out to these homeless people that we see all over the place, and the youth. I mean, I, I assume it's, it's the whole family that's homeless, and, and, uh, hopefully they support each other and, and, uh, and you, and get, get the benefit of, of programs that, uh, help them be supported. Um, I just think it's, uh, if we, if we, uh, if we. I just think it's, if we, if we, if we were not to recognize National Homeless Youth Awareness Month, we'd be doing a disservice to this community. So I, I, I hope that you'll all join me in, in supporting this with a yes vote.
I'd also like to recognize Haley Newman from the, who's the coordinator of the School Climate and Wellness Perimeter. You want to address us? You're welcome to, but you don't have to.
I would love to. Is that okay?
Yes. Do the microphone please.
It's good to see you all again and welcome to our new trustees of the board. My name is Haley Newman. I'm the School Climate and Wellness Coordinator. I've, I've been up here talking about wellness centers, all kinds of things. Today I'm representing our Students in Transition Program at the Santa Cruz County Office of Education that is under our Student Support Services Department. And so with this particular resolution, in 2007, our Congress passed its first resolution, recognizing November as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month to build awareness of the issue of youth homelessness, including its causes and potential solutions, and highlight the need to work to prevent homelessness among children and teens. Since then, November has been a time to elevate the issue of youth homelessness, applaud the efforts of businesses, organizations, and volunteers dedicated to meet the needs of the student population, also known as McKinney-Vento students, and grow the commitment to intensify efforts to prevent and end homelessness among young people in the United States. The US public school system enrolls more than 1 million children and youth experiencing homelessness each school year. More locally, an estimated 2,709 McKinney-Vento students in Santa Cruz County were identified in the 2022, 2023 school year. We know that students experiencing homelessness continue to face challenges due to high levels of school mobility, residential mobility, educational disruption, unmet basic needs, and homelessness-related trauma and stress. At the Santa Cruz County Office of Education, the mission of the Students in Transition Program, or SIT, is to implement the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act, which was put in place to ensure educational rights and protections for children and youth experiencing homelessness. Our SIT program is run by our homeless project coordinator, Erica Cortez, who's amazing and has partnerships with our agencies and our community to help support these students. The Students in Transition Program ambitions a county in which McKinney-Vento students have the resources they need to regularly attend and succeed in both school and extracurricular activities. This board resolution is vital in elevating this work and the experiences of our McKinney-Vento students. So on behalf of the SIT program, thank you for considering adopting this board resolution. Thank you.
I move approval of this agenda item.
Motion by Nichols, this is Resolution 23E-36, recognizing November as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. I have a motion.
A second.
Second by Alto and Volcal, please.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Yes.
Trustee Alto?
Yes.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Roth?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
President Van Allen?
Motion carries unanimously. You're all present. You're now to item 12.5, this is Resolution 23-37, recognizing special education day. Do you want to say anything about this stuff?
Yes, just the importance of, of recognizing a part of our, our, our student population that is, continues to grow. And this is also a part of our community that in our schools is, is chronically underfunded. And when I look at some of our districts, has been speaking to our superintendents about now between 15 and 18% of students are not qualified for special education. That is significantly higher than it's ever been. And the, the amount of funding that goes to serving that student population is also significantly higher than what is being provided. And we want the very best education for those students. And we continue to advocate for, for full and proper funding for, for our, our, our community. We, we feel our, our special education students are, are absolutely part of our strength and part of our, our wonderful diversity in our schools. And we are, want to celebrate them and also be sure that they have the very best program of things.
Comments or questions or motions? Are you got, trustee Estrada, then what was your?
Okay, I wanted to say, you know, my, my support of this resolution and of all of the work that I know the board has been, been doing to support services, to support students in special ed programs. And how important it is, you know, the, the strides that we've made in society and in this country for folks with disabilities, who are, who require special education and the investments that we've made. And I look forward to, you know, supporting and uplifting those efforts and continuing them. So yeah, I wanted to say that. Oh, and also we, we weren't able to speak on the last one. Same comments real quick, but I, I wanted to say, you know, also, you know, youth homelessness is also a really incredibly important, you know, role that we have as educators or, you know, as folk, as folks who support, you know, educating folks who are, you know, underserved. And as someone who works, my day job, as many on the board know, is working for homeless veterans, housing homeless veterans. And, you know, seeing child, childhood homelessness and youth homelessness. You know, it's a really important mission that we have of, you know, supporting our unhoused youth in the county. So thank you for, for.
Thanks. I apologize if I missed your wanting to make a comment earlier. Okay, so still waiting for a motion.
I'll make a motion to recognize.
I'm sorry, I had trustee Roth.
Oh, yes, I'll second that.
I, I just want to say I completed my public education before the 1972 Act came. And it is, that our, our schools, they were, you never saw a, a child that required the services that we provide. And, you know, sad, but we weren't even aware. And that the graduations for our special ed students are my favorite. Are absolutely my favorite. Thank you, Sandra, for bringing this forward.
Now a motion. Motion by.
Sue, I think. Didn't you make the motion, Sue?
She made comments.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ross, second by. And we'll call, please.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Yes.
Trustee Alto?
Yes.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Roth?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
President Van Allen?
Hi. Motion carries unanimously. You're all present.
If I did, since I'm giving shout outs, but it'd be all right if I just, thank Haley Newman. Haley's been working in schools in building positive behavioral intervention supports and is also helping us with the wellness center effort. And so she's really doing an outstanding job here representing the, the students in transition. But, but we constantly get feedback about her expertise. She's also a professor at, at CSU MB, helping new teachers to learn about what TBIS and what building that positive school climate is, is, is all about. So we're really fortunate to have her as part of our team.
Item 12.6, Resolution 23-38, to commit funds for high priority capital needs.
This is kind of a learning experience because I didn't realize that, that, that the funds that are, there's a county school facility fund, it's called Code 35. And that if, if there are funds left over for one project, they have to go back into high priority capital facility needs. I, I, I didn't, didn't realize that, that that was the, would have been the case. I thought maybe it should, that money could be shifted around, but no, that's, it's secure that it's a facility's money. And that's, that if we save money on one project, we need to give it to another project. That's a high priority capital facility.
I guess, Leanne Reyes, if you want to comment on this resolution.
I just want to introduce our, our deputy superintendent in charge of business services. Leanne is going to be talking to us about exactly just that. One of the, one of the, we do have several projects that are related to, to, you know, capital projects and the construction projects that we're, we want to position ourselves. And we're in a very fortunate place where we are able to access funding from the state. And so Leanne has a strategy for us to maximize that, the way we can access that, that funding. And so we're going to be having several kind of, some action that's going to be going on over the next few months that we'll be coming back to with additional pieces of this process. Because we want to make sure to get as much funding as possible of the state's making available to county offices of education, which is really exciting. Leanne?
Thank you for that great recap. Yes, very much so. Accessing state funding and getting the state to pay for our projects is kind of like, I'm referring to it as the massive Jenga cube. And you don't want to pull out the wrong piece of the cube and have everything fall down on you and kind of mess up your chances to be able to maximize your future funding that the state will pay for. So you will be, and over the course of the next couple of months, we are going to be bringing several items to you that are more in the vein of facilities, which I know is probably, you mostly hear me talk about budgets, but this is a very large part of my, my job here. So the, the first Jenga piece that we're going to pull is for Fund 35. And as you properly recapped your right, when you have savings that are residual from a prior project, the state, there was a recent lawsuit that passed less than a year ago that allows you to retain your savings for other high capital need facility projects. We're one of the first county offices of education to benefit from that lawsuit. So I've been in very close contact with OPSC, making sure I follow all the rules because I don't want to lose that funding. So as a result, we have about $737,000 left in residual Fund 35, about $600,000 that was residual from, believe it or not, the Sequoia project. And we were able to settle finally with the state and we're now able to retain and the remaining difference is the amount of interest we earned. So by passing this resolution, this is an approach, you've heard me say this before, I think, the belt and suspenders approach. Making sure that the state knows 100%, we are going to use those dollars as we are required to use. And so by passing this resolution, that puts the belt and suspenders on this money for us. In turn, then we can now use and access these funds because by exhausting these funds, it opens us up to access more and new funding. If we don't use these funds first, on the next project that we want to do, the state's going to say, you have money left over. We're going to deduct how much we're going to send you. So we've already identified a high priority project. You've heard us speak briefly, I think, in the past about the ADA issues we have with access to our building and also electrical charging stations. That project alone is probably going to take at least 75% if not more of this money. Secondarily, we have a roof that needs to be put on the building as well. It'll probably take out the rest. As you know, construction and inflation on construction's been crazy in the last year, just like everything else. So again, by passing this resolution, we, we will be ensuring that the dollars will be used in accordance with the regulations set out by OPSC. And.
Which is the office?
Office of Public School Construction. Yes, the Office of Public School Construction. And this is also in accordance with GASV 54, which allows you as the highest authority to set aside or commit funds for very specific purposes. And therefore it cannot be used for any other purpose.
Thank you.
That's a good recap.
Questions or comments from trustees?
Where did the money go before last year? Back to the state?
We were holding it.
Right, but what, what did we, what were we able to do with it?
They would have deducted it from any future money that we would get.
Right. We weren't doing anything or spending it on anything else. We were literally holding it. It wasn't, I don't.
The question is, what was the protocol prior to this lawsuit?
Well, Bruce just said we would have either had to returned it or we would have had to immediately deducted from a future project. But now we're able to spend it and that gives us 100% of the next round of funding that we're going to apply for.
Wow. Thank you.
I would just say that making this facility, our facility is fully ADA compliant, so very high priority. In case anybody wasn't sure of that. So trustees, we need a resolution.
I have a question, sir. So we're talking about existing facilities, right, not new ones?
Correct. But that does help open up the road for us now for some of the new projects that we've been looking at and trying to prioritize. And that's part of the next few meetings that we're going to be having. We're going to be bringing some presentations to you about some of the needs and the waiting list that we have for AlTED students and the opportunity to potentially put them in better facilities. The needs for our special ed students at SoCal High School that are, they're okay. But if we have an opportunity to access state money and do something better for them, why wouldn't we? So there's been site visits and a lot of things happening in the background. We just didn't want to bring too many pieces all at once because I want us to have like a nice linear, linear thought process of what we're doing and why we're doing it. And so there'll be more to come, so don't miss any board meetings coming up.
I will first say thank you so much for your, everything that you do and succinctly explaining it to all of us. So, because I know it's a lot and I know you do a lot. So thank you so much. And I move to approve the resolution.
Resolution 23-38, two seconds.
I did.
And so a motion by Estrada, second by Nichols, and Volcal, please.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado?
Yes.
Trustee Alto?
Yes.
Trustee Estrada?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Roth?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
President Van Allen?
Hi. Motion carries unanimously. You're all present. And we are now to item 13, superintendent's report, Dr. Sol.
Yes, thank you so much, President Van Allen, members of the board. It's a pleasure to give you a, an update. I, this image here is from our participation at the Dia de los Muertos event in Watsonville, which is something that we have been supporting in conjunction with the Watsonville Folk Festival. It's really a wonderful event. I encourage you to participate and, and join us. Really an opportunity for, for the community to come together and, and, and express themselves in music and dance and of course, in the, the, the altars and, and other kind of aspects of, of the celebration. It's just a wonderful aspect of, of, and, and it's really growing. It's become something that is jam-packed and, and a wonderful event. And part of our, our effort is to celebrate cultural events for, for our community. I wanted to share with you that this week, we've been, we've been a part of United Against Hate Week. And we have, thank you to, thanks to Nikibara, working with local partners to put together a toolkit to stand against hate. We are hearing about a significant increase across the country and, and, and beyond of acts of, of, of hate, of antisemitism, of Islamophobia. And, and this is, I think, more timely than ever for us to be able to state without question that we are, our schools, our community are not places for hate and that we're going to do everything in our power to, to ensure that, that our students feel safe and that they can bring their whole selves to school. And, and that we support, of course, public expression, but never if it's going to tear down somebody for, for who they are or, or the faith that they have. And so school districts have been sharing that information. Also, we've been working with, with other organizations that are, that are utilizing this. And, and Nick helped me out with that organization, Santa Cruz.
Santa Cruz County, United for a Safe and Inclusive Community.
Yes, so a wonderful organization that has been organizing a variety of events that we promoted in our newsletter. And Nick has been working with them and, and we see this as, as we do with many of our, our, our efforts. And Nick has been working with them and, and we see this as, as we do with many of our, our, our efforts. It's really symbolic that it's only one week because we want these efforts. We want these. Uh, these activities and this commitment to continue throughout the year. And uh it is an opportunity for us to, to uh be reminded of our values and to be, and to recommit to them. Uh, also, I shared with you already that uh we were in the news uh where they highlighted our pre-apprenticeship construction program. With some graduates and we'll send you the link to that, to that uh, to that report. Uh, it's just a wonderful, you know, our many partnerships kind of. Are, are resulting in, in opportunities for our, our students and our community. And uh, and that's part of what we, we pride ourselves is that, is that when we see an need, when we see an opportunity. And uh we will use our resources to ensure that uh those programs are available and I think. Uh, it feels really uh empowering for, or it is empowering for our students. Who are able to lead these law facilities, in this case for this one program, and to have a career opportunity for them ready to go after completion of our program and, and there were. We anticipate that if we were to look at the recidivism rate for, for students that participate in our program, it is. Much lower and that they're much more likely to be successful as a result of the support programs we're offering. I mentioned earlier that we have been seeing a significant increase in gang activity uh in, in our county. You've been, I'm sure, hearing uh news reports about uh violence in, in uh. In the Watsonville area as well as in other parts of our, of our county. Uh, over the last three days, we have seen uh some uh activities specifically at Harper High School. That was of, of concern and um these are students that are coming from different schools, different school districts, including from our schools and. Uh, unfortunately, uh, uh trying to, trying to have uh, um, uh, you know. Incidents or, or violent incidents with, with, with other students. Um, and we were working with law enforcement to ensure that we are addressing the immediate concern, but also be looking at that kind of the longer term. Those positive uh cultural, uh, you know, school culture uh incentives for students to be able to, to uh, to uh. Uh, get support to, so that they are not a part of, of uh, of making any poor decisions. We do anticipate that the, you know, as part of this, is many of these students who are, participate in. Uh, this kind of activity in school end up getting expelled in some cases depending on the seriousness of, of their behavior. And they end up coming to the county office of education for services and so uh, or either at our, at, at the juvenile hall or in one of our other programs. So. Uh, part of our role is not only to support the school districts and figure out ways to create that, that, those systems of support to minimize the likelihood of this happening, but also be. Ready for when those students come to us and supporting them and helping them make better decisions for themselves. And so that includes our, our uh. Our BASA program where we provide counseling for students who are, um have some sort of affiliation. Um, but we are seeing this as, uh, as we're seeing this as a resurgence of gang activity that we had seen kind of a, a reduction and we are seeing it. Uh, increasing, not only for, for young people, but we're, we're seeing it for, for uh, um, older, older, uh, you know, adults as well. I wanted to share with you that we are also partnering with uh. With many partners in something called the Regional K-Sixteen Collaborative. And this is a new model for how funding comes from the state. Instead of. Having individual school districts or county offices or universities applying for funds, they're saying, no, we're going to give it to large regions. And so we're part of the Central Coast region, which goes all the way from Santa Cruz County all the way down to Ventura County. That's a big region. So they've divided California up into multiple regions and they said, okay, uh, you can apply for, for funding to support uh workforce development. Creating opportunities for people to have uh training and increase their, 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 their workforce uh opportunities. And so uh, this is K-Sixteen, which means it goes from, uh, really should be TK, TK-Sixteen, meaning that it starts with our youngest students and goes all the way up through. The university system, four-year university system. So our partnerships are with UC Santa Cruz, CSUMB, um, Cabrillo College. All, all of our districts, but also UC Santa Barbara, uh, K- Twelve across this region, community colleges across this region. And uh, so we're partnering with this large group of folks. We applied for the grant and we received the grant. The whole region received the grant. So it's eighteen million dollars. Uh, now that sounds like that would be a lot of money if it was localized in, in our little area, but we're talking about Santa Cruz, Ventura County. And so we're not exactly sure what it is going to represent for us. We are hiring that position to help coordinate the grant. That is one of the things that is being funded. But a lot of the efforts that are coming from the state are using this regional model. So one of the reasons why we embrace it and are participating in it without. Knowing exactly how that's going to translate to the funding for our programs. Is that we are hearing that future funding opportunities are going to come through this model. Now the four, this grant is supporting four pathways. Uh, healthcare, um, offered jobs, STEM education, meaning teaching. Um, you know, math, science, engineering, uh, uh, teaching, education, uh, computer science and um. Your science. And. Fourth one is, it's also kind of a tech one. Healthcare. And I'll come to me. I don't remember what the fourth, the fourth path is. Um, but so we're again going to be continuing this collaboration and seeing exactly what the funding is going to be able to do for us. But I do think that you're, you're going to be seeing a lot of these programs that are going to be aligned with what the community college is doing and with the, with the, with the four-year university is doing. Um, I just returned today from the Breaking Barriers Conference with twenty-three people that came from Santa Cruz County. Who went to this conference and um we were the biggest county represented in the room, which is pretty cool. And so we had county behavioral health, we had um school districts, including Chris Monroe was there from Santa Cruz City Schools. We had representatives from PV USC, we had representatives from Encompass, from PDPSA, from uh Salupa de la Rente, from Santa Cruz uh Community Health Centers. Uh, all of these folks and we're all talking about how we're going to improve our mental health services to better serve our students. And um, Haley was there with, with me and, and uh other folks from our, our county office of education. And it really is the, the term, the title of it is Breaking Barriers because we all work in silos. Uh, we're the county office, you're the school district, you're the county behavioral health, and the idea is how can we? Let go of, of these barriers, these silos and say, we have a student who needs services. Let's figure out how we're going to work together so that those services are seamless for them. And so it's, it's really exciting. I think it also is completely aligned with our, with our wellness nurse effort. Uh, which are, which is moving forward in a very positive way and it's also going to help us be prepared for when more funding comes down. And uh, the focus is of this group is to look at school-based mental health services. And so we're really excited about. About how we're going to be able to improve the, the access for students as well as the quality of those programs. And make sure that we don't have barriers as we interact with all these different agencies. So more, more to come on that. Um, I did want to share with you that you received a summary of new uh legislation. It's, it's a lot of different bills and so. Um, what I would recommend are all organized in different categories. And so if you want to, uh, in that email, you'll see ones that are. Related to student services, another category, which is on construction, another category on, you know, and so uh, on human resources. What I would recommend is you go through those and just take a look at what, if any of those pieces of legislation, um, I mean, there's dozens, so you could easily get lost in it.
When did you send that to us in an email?
Today.
Today, yes.
So, so, uh, so please check, check it out um and, and see if you um. Uh, if you have any questions, then this would be an opportunity for you to send, and then we can let you know how we think this is going to be impacting us to the best of our abilities. And um, we have lots of upcoming events. Um, I'm going to be presenting tomorrow night about uh gun violence and what we're doing to prevent that in our schools. Um, the three approaches that I talked about is one is prevention, which is mostly about uh mental health. Uh, the kinds of things that we do to support students. Uh, we also talk about the kinds of uh things we do to try to minimize. Uh, or, or to properly respond uh if there is a threat or a concern that somebody may have. And then the third area is kind of like the drills and trainings and active shooter type preparations that we do. Those are kind of the three areas. And I think that uh, you know, we have seen some increases in, in uh gun-related discipline in our, in our schools. And um, and we continue to uh. Uh, you know, work together with all our partners to try to minimize the risks for our students and our staff.
Is the public invited to attend that?
It is. I believe so. I'll, I'll share the, I'll share the uh link with the.
Thanks. I'd like to hear you talk about that.
Wonderful. Uh, we all, we have a PBIS um. Integrated and Restorative Practices, or SHINP and PIRIS. I'm not sure, is that open to the community or is that more of a staff?
Uh, we have a few uh community partners attending because it was shared in the community update.
I see. Okay, great.
Uh, mostly, mostly school folks.
Right, right. Um, also, uh, we, you know, vaping has been a big, a big uh. Uh, concern for us is very disruptive and has long-term effects on, on our students. And so. Uh, part of our effort has been to, with our TUPA grant, has been to uh, to bring more resources to our schools. Uh, to help prevent and intervene with, when it comes to vaping. And so there is a forum for, for parents, families and caregivers on November twenty-ninth. And then I guess there's another PBIS implementation uh date on there. Um, also, uh, PVSD. Uh, oh no, this is our computer science education community at uh Watsonville High School. I, I think it's in collaboration with PVSD. And then one in, in Santa Cruz uh on December seventh. And um, uh, and then our COE all. And then we wanted to let you know that the California dashboards will be released. Those are those, those um pages that tell you where schools are at, red, yellow. Uh, red, orange, yellow, green, blue. And um, so the data for, for last year, twenty twenty-three is out. And generally speaking, um, we're still seeing that we are not rebounding from, from uh the, the pandemic for most of our schools. We're seeing uh. And uh, in many cases, we've seen uh some, 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 some drops on, on the dashboard. Uh, but that's have some implications because as the county office of education, part of our role for schools that have, have a trend of. Negative, of getting those red scores or those uh orange scores. A part of our role is to provide support to those uh school districts and soon in charter schools. And so uh, they give us funding for that. And so we'll be reporting to you about our differentiated assistance model, which is helping the schools that are struggling uh to make improvements. And uh, we're going to be uh playing an even more active role in that process in the future. Um, so uh, you'll, you'll be seeing that those uh, uh, you may be hearing about it in the media and, and we'll be sure to send you some links so that you'll be able to check out those dashboards. Any questions for me?
Uh, the consortium or whatever, the Santa Cruz to Ventura?
Yes, the regional. Uh, let me show you a map.
Six counties.
So um, I'll show you a map, real.
And while Superintendent Sabal does that, I can give you the fourth one. So it is healthcare pathways, engineering pathways, STEM pathways and computer science pathways.
All right, so let me see if I could find the map. The engineering, thank you for finding it. So. If you look at this. Map. There it is. You'll see that. This is the size of the Central Coast, but you'll see that all of California is broken down into these different. Into these different very large. Regions. So this is us, ours.
It's probably the six counties.
Uh, this is San, the Santa Cruz County is part of, is supposed to be in here. So it does look like we're, the, the map may be. Like it's getting cut off, but, but in fact, it's uh all of Santa Cruz County as well. And Hollister and, I mean, that San Benito and Monterey.
Now, it's, it, it's exactly uh the same as the Girl Scout Council, the board I have.
Really?
We know who created it.
My, my, my.
Actually, one of the people who created it with.
That explains. So these are called the uh surf, uh, the, the uh. The surf regions is what they uh, and so um, so that we. Are wanting to make sure that we are kind of on board with this because it may be the way how, how some larger, some of the larger projects are funded in future, so.
It's difficult.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem to be population-based either because Redwood Coast and Bay Area.
No, it isn't. And you've got Santa Cruz, then you have Los An- uh, Ventura, that is Los Angeles.
On that map, on that map that I pulled it up, it. On the map, it may be incorrectly blends us in with Bay Area. So, sorry, I, I also was. Looking at that. So is that what we were talking about? Or um, are we, is that map incorrect?
I think it's just that where this line is, is, is a little bit off because we're really, this is a little bit further north because Santa, all of Santa Cruz County is part of the Central Coast region.
Okay, okay, just, just clarifying that.
Interesting.
That is it for my report.
Great, thank you. Trustees, we're now to our own trustee reports. Um, I can report, I did a little committee work. Um, I got another.
I'm sorry.
Lost my protocol here. Trustee first. Um, if I got, I'll, I have one more half of a meeting.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make a report and I'd like to make a, I'd like to report an observation and something else, something more to. An observation that I've made at my school, um, at PBI specifically is the arrival dismissal times uh with the traffic that is going on in that area. And that we have no monitors nor cross cards uh there. So it's a very big danger to. Students and also drivers because I feel students and drivers don't pay attention to who's going in front of them, where is there, like who's going where. I feel monitored or cross guard is a very big step into helping, helping traffic in that area during the arrival dismissal time. Also, um, I was participating, well, there was. A student panel today, but also the student panel on November second of LGBTQ plus. I noticed the. Inclusion of student voice in the last month through that because I was a part of that uh student panel. And I was able to hear what LGBTQ plus um people say about being a friend and not just an ally, being, they taking like. Making action, not just saying words, creating, like say spaces on campus. Also, I'm currently in the process of connecting the student trustees from across the county, each district. What I hope to do with that is collectively address concerns and challenges while working together to make positive changes in education policies, practices and. Be off my report. Thank you.
This is committee work and I got a chance to um, once again, um. Uh, share some of my little tricks and tips on public speaking with a, a, our meeting of our student leaders that was last weekend. It was really fun. I think they enjoyed it. That's my report.
Uh, you committee meetings and uh the, the, the diversity standard. Allah, where our, our. COE was honored in a glittery, bright and fun way. It was fun. Uh, the. There was a Santa Cruz County School Boards Association meeting and the next one will be in January. And uh, the topic for that at this point in time looks like it's going to be um. About special ed. So uh, I'll, I'll report on that again uh in. And invite everyone to attend uh when I know more about it. Uh, the person that came to speak to us was from CSBA. Chris Reed and he is a legislative director and. And it was excellent, uh, as far as updating it as where we are, where the legislature is. And, um, he took our questions and reiterated over and over again for us to develop relationships with our legislators, that we do have a voice and a very important voice. That includes students, uh, even more. And, um, we talked about cyber attacks and so that's why I'm thinking CSBA may be working on, on some of that too. And, um, also, uh, working through legislature to allow retired teachers uh, to cut some of the, uh, things that are holding them back from being able to step into the classroom. Uh, just to help us with, uh, the lack of, uh, teachers at this point in time. And, um, he, he talked about zero admission. That's as, as a thing that it's occurring before its time. And especially in California, it doesn't serve everybody. Uh, there are places where they, uh, don't even, couldn't even, um, actually have the amount of electricity needed to, uh, restore the, the batteries. Uh, the Scotts Valley's parcel tax passed at seventy-three percent. Bruce helped them and, uh, as the San Rosa Valley is having some construction, uh, projects going on. Uh, they're increasing their, um, student voice, uh, along with a student rep on their board. Uh, so Cal has a new CBO and, um, uh, let's see, Aharo, looking at possible bond issue. And, uh, what they passed in two thousand and twelve was only half of what they needed and that was huge. Forty million, something like that. It was big. My Hope, uh, is looking at a bond issue at workforce housing. And, but they are pursuing the electric buses. They have the electric connections to do that. Uh, Claudia, our, the Santa Cruz City Schools, they're also looking at workforce housing at eighty units. Uh, and leave it natural bridges, the natural bridges site. And, um, and then, uh, Bonnie Dune, uh, they've settled with their union. They are a basic aid district, but just barely basic aid means they get a certain amount of money. It's not based on ADA. Uh, meaning average daily attendance. They just get so much money, but they're, they're really struggling. Uh, because I guess they're giving out of it. And, um, anyway, and his plea as always is that he's a superintendent principal and he's being ripped apart by the amount of reporting that is being required uh, for a district of his size. Uh, and it, it, he isn't where he should be. Or he's where he should be, but he is not dealing with the school and the teachers and the students as much as he would like to be. And this is fourteen, we celebrated our fourteenth birthday, fourteen years of this. And part of my thinking is that maybe the student representatives either might, might to join that or set up your own. But it, it's where all districts come together. We meet every maybe three, three months. And, uh, it's, I think, helped bring our whole county together and hear the common, commonality of problems and hey, while we did this. So it might be something to think that we could talk. Thank you.
So first of all, I want to apologize for the two, our new trustees. Just because we do use a lot of acronyms in public education, like a lot, too many, honestly. It's, it's so many and, and we are so engraved in it that it just happens naturally and I feel like we don't even realize it sometimes. So, um, I'm going to try my best to kind of explain when I, we do use acronyms just because they are so pervasive, you know, in all of our conversations that, that we are using. Second thing that I noticed, um, I noticed that we don't have the owl anymore. Yeah, we used to sit right here and it's gone, would, would look at me for, in our meetings and I didn't, we didn't even get to name it and I don't know when it left or where it is, but I hope it's still okay. Um, my report, October twenty-fifth, um, so we have the charter committee, we met with PCS, um, and we discussed a little bit, got an update about what they're doing, how, where, where they're at and um, kind of addressed some of the questions and provided some guidance to, um, for the presentation that they typically do on, on a yearly basis around November. And, um, another thing that I did, uh, on October twenty-seven is, um, the city manager for Watsonville reached out to me, Rene Mendez. And he was just really interested about hearing from the community, you know, he, um, is approaching the year in, in his position. I don't know when he started, but I want to say it's about, uh, a year. Um, and just as a person from the outside, it's always good to have somebody from the outside, a new perspective. Noticing that maybe there's certain communities that might be unrepresented. Maybe there's certain, uh, people groups, right, that aren't, their voices aren't being heard. So, uh, definitely reached out to me to, to, to collaborate and say how, how we can potentially, um, get more input from the, from, from the community. So, um, definitely enjoyed that. I feel like that's a good, um, sign as to who is coming from, what do you want specifically for, um, for, for that city? And that's my report.
I also participated in some committee work, um, but other than that, uh, first apologies for being a little late to the meeting today. I was in San Jose because I am back working in education. I was like thinking about talking about this and I was like, oh, I get like bubbly thinking about it. Um, but as you know, I used to teach and then I've like not been in the education space and I find that like I am just so, it, everything we do with the board just makes so much more sense to my life. And like, there's so much more context when I'm on campuses. Um, so I feel like very like personally fulfilled. I work with like after-school staff and training them to work with students. And so I'm back like seeing kids all the time. I'm back working with educators and teachers. So I'm feeling really good about that and I hope I can bring some of that experience, um, not only from our county, but from San Clara County where I was today to, to our board. And, um, hopefully that's my helpful context with some of the stuff we talk about. But yeah, that's it.
Okay. So I was going to talk about the glittery, uh, dinner party that, that we went to on, on October twenty-first. It was the diversity centers fundraiser and they had, they were bragging about, they had an auction. And, uh, the, the, um, entertainment was really good and, and also just, they, they, they had, um, their population had, had, uh, really gone with the theme of the, uh, night was, which was Alice in Wonderland. And so there were Mad Hatters and, and the Queen of, Queen of Hearts and, you know, there were, there there are these people in fabulous costumes. I didn't know there were costumes associated with, uh, Alice in Wonderland that you could acquire, this many costumes in this one county, and then they were all at the, uh, Paradox Hotel. Uh, and, uh, it was really a fun event and I got to sit at the COE table with Ferris and his wife. And wasn't Michael Watkins sitting at our table and his wife was there too? I don't, I don't think you were at the table.
I'm sitting right next to you in a glittery red dress.
Oh, that's right.
And I'm trying to convince you to make a bunny.
That was you. Yeah, I didn't know we were supposed to wear glitter. I just dressed normally. Yeah, that was really, that was really a, a fun fundraiser for that entity. I think he said they had already earned, it brought in a hundred thousand dollars. Did you hear that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that number's stunning.
I think it was the most they've done.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they, uh, I believe they said they surpassed, they surpassed their, 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 their goal for the night. And, but I do, I do, the county office of education did receive an award and I, I do want to, to, I think that's, that's really important because you play an important part of that. And the fact that, um, that the diversity center, which we work with and we have, they provide so much support to us. Uh, and, and, uh, we've learned, you know, and continue to grow with them. Um, uh, provided that, 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 that award, I think is a great honor. Uh, I wish I went, went to the Santa Cruz Center Gala, um, but I, I'm sure you guys had fun, um, you know, on my behalf. Um, and it sounds like it.
Next you.
We, that's mine for you.
Yes. I had tons of it, uh, with your red glittery dress. Um, I am now on the policy committee. I don't know if you've heard. And, um, I'm not sure, um, what else I've done. I've been, you know, looking into, um, CSBA resources. Um, I know that, um, you know, districts are, are the ones that are in, in our, um, you know, funding landscape kind of tasked with providing workforce housing. Because if we could easily, um, make, you know, affordable and nice workforce housing, uh, we would do it in a heartbeat. But I know that, um, you know, there are lots of different regu- regulations that we have to follow that districts, you know, um, have different, you know, authority responsibilities. Um, uh, but I've been looking into some other, um, potential resources recommended by CSBA for, you know, county offices of education and how we can help support, um, educators. And I've, I've heard of some, uh, other, um, nonprofits that can help provide, um, down human assistance for educators. And so I look forward to, you know, looking more into that, seeing what I can, um, you know, find that might help support our educators because I know that it's an issue for, you know, recruitment and retention here, uh, in the county for, um, not just us, but all the districts. And so anything that we can do, um, to help in this, you know, housing crisis, I think is really important. So I look forward to seeing if there's anything in our wheelhouse that we can do to help support, uh, educators. That's, that's what I gotta say for now.
Thank you. Trustees, um, I don't believe we have any, um, other, I thought, committee reports. We want to mention number sixteen, our schedule, um, December meeting, um, needs to be moved up a week. So rather than being on December twenty-first, we need to have it on December fourteenth and this to meet a legal deadline requirement. Um, so it'll be the usual four P M on Thursday, December fourteenth.
So we will require action to modify that.
Oh, we, we didn't vote. Okay. So I'm sorry. So we need a motion to actually shift the meeting time.
I'm gonna make that motion.
Motion, but I'll, oh. I'll second it.
You did it on my calendar.
Check and second. Okay. So we have a motion. This could just be a vote, I mean, uh, just a voice vote. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say no.
Can we get an email sent out so that those that are here might also know?
All right. One thing I forgot to include in my update was that, uh, our budget for bench assistance is having a fundraiser on November twenty-eighth at five thirty. Um, so it's a suit for a cause and we have space at our table. If, if you'd like to join us, it's, uh, it's going to be in the, in the Civic Plaza on the fourth floor. Top bill, the top floor of the, of the, uh, so if you're able to make it in November twenty-eighth at five thirty, please let Bernie.
Great. Right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.